It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call general session back to order, please. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. We'll start with section Roman numeral three or section three. Gina, Ms. Picard?
I recommend that minutes pertaining to collective bargaining and the ESP negotiation update remain sealed until such time as an agreement has been reached.
So moved.
Mr. Liz, Ms. Lizon made the motion to recommend that the minutes be to the collective bargaining remain sealed. And Mr. Callahan seconded. Any discussion? On the minutes? Any questions? No? Okay, thank you. Take a vote. Those in favor of accepting the minutes? Thank you. Those opposed? Any abstentions or recusals? I don't think so. I think everyone, as far as I can see. Sorry, the school committee is not all in front of me. I'll have to check. Okay. Donna, it looks like that was unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Catherine?
I have the executive session votes. The first vote was for executive session minutes March 9th and the ESP negotiation update. Approved by Abbott, I'm sorry, by Callahan, Day, Juicy, Legori, Luzon, Lial, Macaruso, McAllister, Stahl, and Mr. Abbott abstained. The next vote was executive session minutes of March 9th, legal strategy abstaining Abbott. In agreement, Callahan, Day, Juicy, Legori, Luzon, Lial, Macaruso, McAllister, and Stahl. Third vote is executive session minutes, March 9th, home instruction requests. Mr. Abbott abstained. Approved by Callahan, Day, Juicy, Legori, Luzon, Lial, Macaruso, McAllister, and Stahl. And finally, the final vote was to return to open session. Approved by Abbott, Callahan, Day, Juicy, Legori, Luzon, Lial, Macaruso, McAllister, and Stahl. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juicy.
And Ms. Picard, recognition?
Please join me congratulating the following students. Grade 11 hospitality students, Anya Betts, Maya Cota Elefante, Althea Grandchamp, Lauren Hubertus, Vera Judkins, Molly Younger, Leah Kelvington, Isabella Santos, Mia Wilcox, and Gabriella Wolf. They participated in the guest service goal training and successfully passed the certification with honors. We also have postseason awards. Girls Indoor Track, Cage Grissom for the Academic Allstate, Abby Cole for the Academic Allstate, Erin Von Housen, the First Team Allstate 1,000 meters and 1,500 meters, and the Coaches Award. Margaret Whedon, Third Team Allstate High Jump. Boys Indoor Track, Joseph Golis, All Class Four Times 800 Relay, Kyle Ackroyd, All Class Four Times 800 Relay, Noah Dinucci, All Class Four Times 800 Relay, Miller Marsil, All Class Four Times 800 Relay, Finn Whedon, All Class 3,000 meters. For Boys Basketball, Jarrett Beauclaire, First Team All Division Two South, Tyler LaBelle, Second Team All Division Two South, Zachary Boschwitz, Third Team All Division Two South. Girls Basketball, Spencer Shields, First Team All Division Two South, Shelby Rude, Second Team All Division Two South, Jules White, Third Team All Division Two South. And then we have Gymnastics, Randy Swenson, Second Team All Division, Isabella Santos, Third Team All Division, and Lauren Hubertus, Third Team All Division. Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. Yay. I know we. Good job, everyone. Um, let's see, we're on a public forum. This is the opportunity for people that are in the public right now to make comments with any, with any item that's not on the agenda. And if you have any comments or questions regarding an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand at this point. And I'm looking, but I don't see anybody. And if I'm not seeing you, please shut out. So I don't want to miss anyone. Okay, I don't think there is anyone that wants to say anything, so I'll close that public forum and move to policy. Ms. Picard?
So the policy on the agenda tonight is the bus behavior code. It's a revision, and I would like to recommend approval of the revised bus behavior code policy.
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Luzon made the motion to accept the policy as amended. Mr. Callahan seconded. This is open for discussion. Questions, clarifications. Mr. Luzon?
Yes, Gina, versus John still with us? Well, my question is that.
There he is. There's John.
Hi, John. Can we make them work on Saturdays? One C says Saturday from detention to community service. So can we make them work? I mean, I'm not questioning whether we should. I'm asking, can we make them? I'm assuming community service means they're working.
Yeah, it's actually a practice that's happening right now. The detention went away. Just we're updating to show what's actually happening.
And in answer to your question, it's like any form of detention that if the school, if the student doesn't participate in it, there are additional consequences. For example, if the student doesn't show up at the school and walks away from the building, we don't put handcuffs on the child and drag the child back to the building, but there are additional consequences. It would be the same with regard to Saturday detention.
Okay, I'm just asking because of the way it's worded now.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Picard, I had a question about the community service, too. Could you give us an example of what is happening with regards to community service? I'm just interested.
I know a lot of the things that the principals mentioned were things that happened in the courtyard, cleaning, you know, up equipment, organizing, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Around the campus.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Betsy Alvarez?
Hi, yeah, I just have a quick comment. I was reading over the bus behavior code and looking at some of the changes that were made. And by the way, I'm Betsy Alvarez. I'm a Huffington parent. I did Ashaway and Charroh Middle School. And on class, the section where it says class three, number, I'm just looking at my phone because I took a screenshot of it, number nine, it says making racial slurs or using hate speech. When I look at the discipline, um, I'm just making a recommendation that I absolutely think with the new climate we're in and the fact that we have a new parent group organization on racism, you know, that whole topic, that I feel as a parent that a referral should be made to the superintendent, that that item should be moved to class four. Just that I just, just a minimum five days suspension. Um, you know, that's all good, but I do think that our administration building should know if any, anything like that's happening. I don't know. That's just a comment from me because it just seems to be something that powers that be besides the bus company should know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez.
So just to clarify, the behavior is done through the principal so that the bus company would refer any of the classes, and the principal makes the decision on the, on the offense and how they're going to move forward. So that is not the bus company doesn't determine that. The principals do.
Okay, it's just, yeah, the wording that doesn't, that's not really clear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. School committee members, anybody? Yes, Mr. Glory. Can we unmute? Can I unmute him?
Sorry, I got it. My logistical question, really. On the first page, under the title Appeal Process, item one appears to apply to appeals, but item two, three, and beyond have nothing to do with appeals. In fact, it goes into what are violations? So procedurally, should there be separate headings for that? Hearing silence.
I'm open for anything the committee would like to see done.
Well, I just think it says appeal process, but for instance, if you look at item A, that has nothing to do with an appeal. That's a violation. Item B is a violation. Item C is a violation, and so on. Those aren't, those aren't part of the appeal. So I just think.
Actually, none of them are appeals.
You could argue the first one is.
Okay. I.
Just a point of reference that I think that we need headings that actually apply to the subitems.
I'm assuming John had a chance to review this, right, Ms. Picard?
So John didn't review this one. This was an update that was pending even prior to me arriving and that we put together with the principals, the bus company, and the admin, because it was no, it was more about just tweaking some of the language. It's already been there, but I'm happy to share it with John. The headings, I think we can, we could add and separate out anything that the committee wants to make sure is clear, because if it doesn't look clear to you, then.
Okay.
We have Ms. Macaruso has her hand up. Lisa?
Brian actually had his up first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
But I don't, I don't have my little hand up.
Oh, I see, Ryan. Sorry, Ms.
Come back to me. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Callahan and then Lisa Macaruso.
Thank you. Gina, what heading would you recommend for that section?
Really bus expectations, expectations on the bus. I'm thinking, starting with A, Mr. Legoris, that's what you're talking about, correct? No? Starting. Are you, I'm. Appeal process.
Yes, yes and no, Gina. So you're right, that is a section, but expectations doesn't fit. And I don't want to slow down tonight's meeting over this, but so first instance, expectations means here's what we expect you to do. So if you look at item B, that's not an expectation. That's indication of a violation, right? We don't expand. What we expect you to do is sit in your seat. So I don't want to get caught up in the language because I can, I can have fun with that all night long. But I think it's, I personally think it's worth going because, and maybe John has a different feeling, but you know, I deal with grievances a lot at work, and the language will cause us to lose the grievance because we didn't put the proper heading in, or we said expectation of this isn't in fact an expectation and so on and so forth. So it may be something for John, the committee, I'm happy to help, whatever, just to really closely look at, see what the headings are, and if they in fact do make sense with what we're trying to say.
Versus expectation.
Okay, Ms. Macaruso.
Thank you, Chair. And I figured out how to put my hand up. So I think that Gary makes a good point that it maybe to consider this like a first read of a new policy and then utilize his expertise and others to kind of maybe do a revision. I like a lot of what has been changed. I like the inclusive parenting language. I like the guardian aspect. I like some of the clarity. Um, so two points. One is on. So class two, 19 and 20. Um, I, I not unlike what Gary is talking about, I don't want to have language that we can't enforce. It doesn't help, right, to have language that we're not going to be able to follow through on, nor do I think that we should have anything that's antagonistic to students. And so I, and I don't know why we wouldn't want them to have an opportunity to engage in something quiet, a podcast, music, something good for their mental health and settling when you also, number 10, you don't want a disruptive noise level. Right? So, and you don't want wrestling or horseplay. Well, they're, you know, they're kids, so what can they do? They can read a book, but not every child benefits from reading a book. Not every child feels that reading a book is something that relaxes them. So I'm a little concerned with 19 and 20 and nine and 10. I just don't, I, I'd like more your thoughts on that, Gina, like why we're holding on to, I mean, the laptop, there's a liability issue because it's our property, but their phone? I mean, my, why can't, I want, and we're going to talk about mental health in a little bit. I want kids to be able to listen to music, to isolate, to calm down, to transition to and from school. There's a lot of benefits to that. So if we were approving tonight, I wouldn't be able to approve it based on those two things. And then I just want to say I appreciate what Mrs. Alvarez brought up. Um, I hadn't actually caught that myself. Um, I was really focused on these other two things, so I appreciate community, right? Everybody, everybody lifting the tide, everybody helping out. So when we look at class three versus class four, and we have sexual harassment and physical assault in class four, we know that the research says that microaggressions are now actually racial trauma and that it, it actually seems to go with sexual harassment and physical assault. It might, it should be grouped there. Um, so I'd like you to reconsider that, too. And again, I think Mrs. Alvarez for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Ms. Macaruso. Mr. Stahl and then Mr. Luzon.
Thanks. I, I agree with Gary's points on this, that the wording needs to be cleaned up. And the other discussions I think are really good and really valid, and I think this needs a bunch of revision. And I would also be much more comfortable with John looking at a policy change like this before it comes to us. So I'd like to see it revised, and I'd like to know that it went through legal. And then I would be willing to vote for it at a later meeting, not tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Mr. Luzon?
So Gary, if you're going to make a motion, I will gladly second it.
Well, we have to close the first motion because the first motion we made was to accept the policy. We did make a motion, so we need to close that. I helped me with this. I think we would probably take.
Can be, that can be rescinded if they choose not to move forward the policy, that they can pull back that motion.
I made the original motion, so if Gary's going to make a motion, I will rescind my, my initial motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luzon. So the motion has been rescinded. Mr. Legori, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move that we take.
Excuse me. Need the second rescinded as well.
Oh, okay, that, okay, that was Mr. Callahan, I believe, right? Who seconded? Yes, so he's, he's saying yes, we can rescind that. Thank you, mister. Do we have to take a vote on that, Donna? It's just rescinded, correct?
Yes, they've, they've removed him.
Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry, Ms. Legori, go ahead.
That's okay. I would move that we revise the policy as it stands now before it's brought to the committee for a vote.
Second.
And there, okay, so the, the new, the new recommendation is to table the policy for, to go back and have it amended, and it would come back to us at a later date to review. This was on second that. Any other discussion on this matter? No, thank you. Those in favor of tabling this until a later date, this policy? Okay. Looks like everyone that's in, it's a unanimous vote. I still don't see Donna Chambers. Are you on, Donna? She was still having a problem getting on. So Donna, Siskovich, that Donna Chambers is not in, in the session right now, but it's unanimous for the remainder of the, the school committee. Okay, let's move on to business. I'd like to take just a few seconds to, before we start the business portion of the agenda, I'd like to make a strong recommendation that we are mindful of the number of agenda items. There is a lot to talk about tonight. So I would love for you to keep your comments short, and please, please, please stick to the, stick to the agenda items so that we can have a, I want everyone to be able to participate and have a good conversation, but I want, I want to make sure that we stay on task and on topic with regards to the agenda items. Thank you very much for your time. So now let's move on to business, letter A.
This is the approval of a variance request to the Commissioner of Education for a time extension to February 15th, 2022 for submission of our Stage Two application. The Charroh Regional School District Committee would be requesting an extension of time to submit the Stage Two application more than one year after preliminary approval, specific to the Council on Elementary and Secondary Education Regulation 200-RICR 20-05-4, 4.92 parentheses, A, A, D, pertaining to the submittal of the Stage Two application within one year of the preliminary approval. The capital improvement plan in Charroh's Stage Two application is for the four elementary schools along with the main campus and the feasibility of rethinking our elementary school planning.
I'm sorry?
So moved.
Oh, so moved, Mr. Luzon. And Mr. Abbott, are you going to second that, or you have a question? Mr. Abbott?
I have a question.
Okay, the, okay, so Mr. Mr. Callahan seconded that motion. So now we're open for discussion. Mr. Abbott, your hand was up first. You go right ahead.
Does this include the potential for new construction, the consolidation of the elementary schools?
This is a variance to approve, continuing with our application process to continue the feasibility of a new elementary school plan.
This is just giving us extra time, George. That helps. Mrs. Ms. Juicy, Catherine?
So just to clarify, this in no way is locking us into one elementary school. This is simply to give us enough time so that we can get our, our stuff together and keep exploring fewer and fewer, correct?
That is correct. It could take, there's no, has been no vote on one school. There hasn't been no vote on any specific plan regarding the direction that the committee wants to move in. Just a starting point for the conversation for community feedback. Thank you.
Mr. Draper, you, you seem to have your hand up. Would you like to make a comment, please?
Yes, just echoing the superintendent's words, when we had a meeting with the town council presidents and either the town managers or their finance directors, that was a big concern of each of the communities to make sure that we had adequate time to vet the different suggestions. And that is part of this process, which is to go to ride. They required us to have at least three weeks' notice instead of the typical 48 hours notice that goes with most public meetings. And that's specifically because of the amount of time they want us to consider what we're asking for. So yes, this, this is to garner more community input and feedback on the plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Any other comments or questions? I don't see any, so we are going to take a vote. We have a, we had the motion and the second. So those in favor of the approval of the variance? Thank you. Okay, those against? Mr. Abbott? Those abstaining? Recusals? Okay, so we had one opposed, and that was Mr. Abbott. Thank you very much, committee. Okay, letter B, necessity for school construction update. Mr. Callahan?
Thank you, Chair. I will make this brief. What I want to share with the committee tonight is this great flyer that I think you have seen already, but I don't know if everybody else online has. But Gina and Ned had pulled together, so we had met with town council presidents and the finance folks to just kind of walk through what the elementary school, you know, facility project meant and just to try and clarify some issues. And so there's this great flyer that has been put together, and it has a list of some of the top five questions that's come out from our community. And I'll touch on those in a second, but then on the right-hand side, there's some good input. There's also links to frequently asked questions and the ability to post your own questions and have those, those specifically answered with respect to this. And then Ned actually put his contact at the bottom. I don't know if he's going to regret that or not, but you can also send an email and ask him questions if you have him. So one of the first things that we want to, that we get asked a lot is that, am I voting for one new school for Charroh Elementary students in this coming April 6th, 2021? Vote on the budget. That answer is no. That, that is not going to happen. If that comes to fruition, it'll come in 2022. Next question, am I voting for any new school plans for Charroh in this upcoming vote on April 6th, 2021? That answer is no. A big question related to funding in this. How much money is being allocated in this budget that we're voting on April 6th, 2021 to pursue new elementary school options? That answer is $250,000, and that's been allocated to pay for the requirements to pursue the feasibility of multiple options to reimagine our elementary schools. Number four, when will the community taxpayer vote on a possible elementary school plan? That is going to be April 2022. That will not be this year. That will be April 2022. Is the school committee going to stick with one option A moving forward? It's a great question, which is to build one large elementary school. And that answer is, it depends. That's our starting point. So option A, in terms of consolidation of four elementary schools today into one large school, is the starting point. And we have a pathway forward to get the community involvement and get the engineering work done necessary so that we can put a tangible pathboard or plan forward for reimagining our elementary schools in front of the voters next year. And that is taking place since we've approved the extension. That'll be taking place from now through August timeframe. And that's all. Gina and Ned, do you have anything to add to that?
No, Ms. Picard. Mr. Draper, anything to add to that?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I'd add is if there were any timing questions or process questions, either I can, I can answer, or Derek's also joined us this evening in case there's answers you're looking for from Colliers relative to the process.
Thank you, Derek, for joining us. Mr. Mr. Abbott, you have the floor.
Yes, well, we know how much money is being directed towards the one school option as opposed to fixing up or eliminating one school and going with the other three.
Okay.
Can we get a breakdown of how much money is going potentially to the one school option as opposed to the other options?
Okay, Mr. Draper, you had your hand up, and Mr. Callahan. So either one of you, please take the floor. Mr. Callahan?
So George? Yeah, great question. What is going to happen next is that the engineering portion of it to give us that cost impact relative to one option of just a single school or the options of retrofitting, you know, multiple schools. That's already been done in large part. It's been presented to this school committee a couple of times. But so I, I'm not sure going forward. That has to be refined, but it, it will be known whether or not, if you pursue a single elementary school, what the cost of that pursuit would be versus retrofitting or upgrading all four of the existing schools or consolidating into three or two, whatever option, those, those financial impacts will be known.
I just want to know that how much money will be directed out of the $250,000 to the other two options as opposed to option A?
Okay.
I understand. Yeah, Ned, why don't you touch on?
So that's a great question, Mr. Abbott. The $250,000 number is really to flesh out all options. I think that's maybe the best way to say it, because we don't have a specific option yet that we're focused on. It's truly about getting the input. I needed to put a figure that approximated how much time, energy, and design work is going to go into getting that final answer. That was about the closest we could get, and that's based upon working also with Colliers and their experience of late, working with school districts. I can also share with you, I was involved in a similar process with another district that was looking at a regionalization approach. And when I actually worked with a consultant that we've, that we've. And when I actually worked with a consultant that we've that we've been talking to about how do we get the communities together and get some really good feedback, and it was a very similar process to what we think will happen here. But that two fifty number is not carved in stone, could be much less if the community emerges and says we want one option this way, or it could be that or a little bit more if we get into intricate designs that require a lot of a lot of design work to get us exactly what we want.
Okay, will the design work include the the other options? In other words, or will the bulk of the money be spent on the one school option?
I wouldn't I wouldn't say the bulk of the money would be on the one school option unless that emerged as the one the community's wanted.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry to be more clear, but until we know specifically what the communities are going to support, we don't know where the money's going to start to flow until that time.
It just seems like we're a little tilted, or at least the school committee and the administration appear to be a little tilted towards the one school option based on existing reports.
And that's, yeah, and that's that's a starting point that has obviously garnered a lot of reaction. And we know the the next steps are going to be to get those community reactions and filter them into what specifically is the community going to support?
Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. McAllister, you have your hand up and then?
Yes. Just a quick question back to the flyer, Ryan. And Gina, is this going to be distributed in our town and on the website? Is that what the plan is?
So it is on our website. It was it was sent to all the town council presidents and the town managers and everyone that attended the Thursday meeting. And we asked that they share it if they could. That's up to them, but we did ask if they could share it. We would appreciate it. I know one of our family groups, friends of Charahoe, shared it on their Facebook page, but we did ask that they if they were willing to, if they could share, but we've shared it with all of the town council via our email distribution list, all of our families, anyone on our distribution list. We sent it out via School Messenger and it is on our district website under both headlines and our necessity for school construction right under district information.
Okay, so we can distribute it also?
Yes.
Thank you.
May I just clarify something?
Sure.
Ahead, Miss, Miss. So and I know Derek's on, so if we could, I don't know if he can unmute, but if he can unmute. Some of the two, like Ned said, around the two hundred and fifty thousand, which is sort of that ballpark. It's like Ned said, flush out all the options, but you want to be able to say that the starting point, as we've said, was the one school. That's where the committee decided to start with the one school. I just want I want to be clear that, so for example, there's going to be vision, what they call visioning workshops for the community. So there's a group of about fifty individuals. Each town selects. There's a criteria of how those get selected, who has to be on the visioning team for the community, and then those updates come to the school committee as as a larger group to be able to sort of go through what happened at those workshops. When they were in person, they were a couple of days, full day workshops, and then they oftentimes followed up a week or two later to sort of come back, regroup and rethink. So to Ned's point, if the if the community group wants to recommend a one school, multiple buildings, let's say, where you have pre K through two and a three through five, it's considered one school, but it's two different buildings on the same lot. Or they say, you know what, we really prefer that close whole valley, have three schools. That's where we need the architects to come back with a design. And so they have to basically take that feedback, redesign and come back. The number of times we ask to do that will be dependent on sort of the feedback and the direction. So the visioning workshops, the architectural designs are pretty bulk of what's going to happen. But Derek, did you want to add anything around those approximation figures?
Yeah, no, thank you, Superintendent. That's that's really helpful. And yeah, from my perspective, just as a kind of reminder of how we got here and where we're going. The, you know, the the initial feedback was collected and that survey went out, which really said the community wants to see some change, right? That's what the initial data told us. And so this investment that we're talking about of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is is going to allow us to figure out, well, what specifically, when we drill down to what that means to each individual? What does that change look like? For some people, it might mean one consolidated school. For others, it might mean newer schools in each of the three towns or some combination thereof. So really what we do here is we start to really think about the education model, what that looks like in terms of a building or buildings and and what the three towns can agree that, you know, that they really want to support and get behind. So in in many ways, although I know this has been a process that you've all been engaged with for some time, some of the the bigger work of community input is really just beginning. And so that's what that funding allows us to do.
Thank you, Derek. Mr. Reddish, you had your hand up and you took it down. Did you still want to comment on on something? Please do. You have the floor.
I just wanted to reiterate the importance. Dr. Callahan, I just wanted to say that your summary was perfect. And that's what we need more of, so it nets it out for the community. But I would really encourage somehow to make sure that gets into the paper because we want to make sure that as our voters go to vote on the budget, they really, really understand what they're voting on and it's clear. And that there's no misperceptions, which I think your summary really netted it out perfectly. And I just suggest the school committee going forward, those types of net outs are very effective for the community on helping understand things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddish. Sorry, okay. Mr. Day, you have the floor.
Yes, I I mentioned at the last meeting that we have a long history of trying to get buildings constructed in this district and I'm hoping that the administration has looked back at some of the history here and found some of the things that work for for this district to get things passed and some of the things that failed so that we wouldn't be making some of these same mistakes as far as reaching out to the community and getting communities bought. We have a lot of elderly people that do vote in here and maybe they're not into the surveys, maybe they're not into the computers and doing the things that that the the younger parents with the school age children have. So I I'm just concerned that we're not relying too much on technology to to get get some feedback because we might be easily going down the wrong or wrong road there. So I'm just hoping that we're doing everything that we can to make sure that we don't have any missteps.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Good point. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm going to close item B. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Thank you, Derek and and Miss Picard for that and Mr. Draper.
Chair, we have a hand raised.
Oh, we do. Well, thank you very much. Stephanie Goodwin?
Hi, I guess I'm just still a little confused. I, as someone who is very supportive of the school budget and always vote for it, the two hundred and fifty thousand, I know we talked about it, but I'm still just a little bit confused. Wouldn't it make more sense to?
She disappeared. I don't see her. Miss Goodwin, Stephanie? She's not on the list anymore either. I wonder if she lost connection. Okay. Well, we could have her maybe when she gets back. I mean, we could, I guess, try to answer her question or at some point, maybe if she could reach out to us via email and then we could do that. I just feel badly. Yes, Mr. Callahan?
There is a section on that flyer to submit questions.
Good. Thank you. It sounded like she just needed more clarification on the the feasibility amount. Okay, so we are going to close B again, recommending that we close B and move on to C. Anti racism task force subcommittee up to date on the practices. Lisa, do you want to welcome again the task force? Looking forward to your presentation.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity. So just to kind of set the stage, Dan Fitzgerald will begin the presentation today and then you'll be meeting some familiar members and maybe meeting some new ones as well. Tonight is the practices presentation and as a reminder, right, the the focus is on the practices in the Charahoe School Regional District. And the task force has been asked to look at that through the lens of equity and diversity and inclusion. This evening, the anti racism task force is seeking input from the school committee as well as the community as to which of the three tiered recommendations should be explored further, which should be possibly paused and which may be ready to to be implemented. So they're they're looking forward to that. The intention is to give you an overview of where they are now and get feedback and direction from the school committee and and some from the community on these items. So I ask, as the chair did earlier, Chair, that the the tiers are very clear and they're going to be well organized and bulleted. And so those who want to comment or provide feedback should be easily able to say, I'd like to talk about tier one. This practice or tier three, this recommendation. And with that, Dan will will take it from here.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. And I think, yep, I have the ability to share my screen, so I'm going to do that real quick. All right, so everyone should be able to see my screen. Thank you so much for inviting us here today. My name's Dan Fitzgerald. I live in Hopkinton. And I am here in my role on the practices subcommittee on the anti racism task force. I also come to this work from the perspective of being, I graduated from Charahoe Regional School District in two thousand thirteen. I was a founding member and serve as our executive director for the Charahoe Youth Task Force. So I work alongside a lot of our our students on a variety of health and wellness topics. So with that said, I'm going to jump in some of these first slides. As we did last time, we did, we wanted to start and end with a quick quote, just to help ground us in this conversation. So we wanted to start calling it back, you know, strong communities are born out of individuals being their best selves. And and with that said, we wanted to just quickly re you know, cap what our charge was given by you as the Charahoe Regional School District School Committee. As you know, you approved the formation of an anti racism task force to examine the policies, practices and curriculum through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion and justice. You saw a few of these slides last time, but just for anybody who may just be calling in and didn't see our meeting last time. Initially, the the name by the put forward by the school committee was the anti racist task force. The kind of first recommendation that came from the anti racism task force now was to change that name to better kind of capture our intended outcome. So that was put forward to the school committee and here we are as the anti racism task force. Once again, we invite everyone and anybody to join our public meetings. We've been meeting the first week of the month. These, again, are public meetings. You can find the information on the school district website. And if you haven't been able to join our web, our Zoom meetings, they're all recorded and also accessible online. So you can check out what, you know, what kind of things we've been working on and go from there. And then finally, you know, really where we started was the creation of working groups. Two weeks ago, in the beginning of this month, you heard from the policy work group who are really working and examining current policies, assessing potential gaps and recommending new policies as needed. Today, we here, I'm joined by my colleagues Carla Harris, Katie Karakosian and Thon Harris, and you'll be hearing from them in just a moment. And we're here to talk about practices. So as Lisa mentioned, this is about assessing the common practices, maybe not the things necessarily was written down in policies, but the practices of our school district and recommending any changes as needed. And then at the April thirteenth meeting, I believe, you'll be hearing from our curriculum group. And we have another group who is working on assessing current curriculum and selection process, things like that in going forward with with those recommendations. Before I hand this over to Carla, I did just want to reiterate the point that, you know, these, we're here and excited for the the opportunity on the agenda as a progress report. So our intentions are to have some really thought out recommendations to you by the end of the school year or in the, you know, in the near future. And today is really about showcasing some of our current thought trajectories and a tiered kind of model. That way we can hear your feedback, like Lisa mentioned, bring that back to the table and that way, you know, incorporate all of that moving forward. So with that said, I am going to hand the real mic over to Carla.
I had a question for the speaker.
I don't know if I'm allowed to answer that.
I had a question.
Oops, Linda, you're muted.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Abbott?
Dan, could you tell the school committee and the community how many non white employees currently work at Charahoe?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
It's just that that's not what we're talking about. Yeah, Mr. Abbott, that's 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 not, that's not really what we're talking about right now. We're talking about the
I don't know. Very number.
Thank you. Somebody needs to be muted. Sorry for the interruption. Ms. Harris, were you up next?
Yes, I am. So my name is Carla Harris. I live in Charlestown. I have a public health background and I am married with three children in the Charahoe School system. So tonight in the practice work group on tier one, some of our recommendations include continuing to make the school committee meeting accessible through virtual access. I know this is something that we've done due to the pandemic, but honestly, due to the time in which the meetings are held, this does seem to work for many of our participants. Our next suggestion is to consider making permanent subcommittee of the of the school committee dedicated to discussing diversity, equity, inclusion and justice. Because ultimately, our task force is meant to be temporary and ideally, we would like a more permanent committee to address these issues. The next one is to consider formalizing practices and expectations for a variety of student facing topics such as allowing students to represent their culture cultures during graduation, such as stools, maybe some decorations on their caps. And then lastly, also when classroom based practices, so ensuring that students of color are not isolated in classrooms when this is possible. So oftentimes, in in the effort to make classrooms more diverse, that means separating children of color. So they're often the only person of color in their classroom. And we know from studies that that has proven to not benefit them in any way, shape or form. So with that being said, I'm now going to pass it over to Katie.
Hi, everyone, and thank you. Thank you, Carla, and I thank the school committee for this opportunity. For those who don't know me, my name is Katie Karakosian. I'm the district's development officer. My family lives in the neighboring district of Exeter West Greenwich, but I hope no one holds that against me. And briefly, I would like to outline our tier two recommendations as you see here. So first, our group has discussed the value in a disciplinary practices review which may offer insights on and show the utility of policy and handbook provisions that are related to the process of referrals and disciplinary actions. We believe this review would be insightful to the district if qualitative and quantitative data were collected to include data on sex, race, students with I E Ps, for example, as well as other demographics within this review. Second, we, while we support and commend the work of our guidance office, and I consider them excellent and very skilled colleagues, we see how much guidance is connected to guidance practices versus policies or curriculum. We recommend that the guidance office is equipped with adequate resources and professional development opportunities in order to serve. and professional development opportunities in order to serve the diverse student body at within the district. This includes equipping staff with knowledge of student opportunities such as scholarships as well as more information on talent and development at URI, for example, as well as tribal colleges and information that may be shared with our students that will help them in their futures. Lastly, we recommend an accessible and enhanced process for community members, parents and students to share warm and cool feedback on curriculum lessons and assignments that can be reviewed at such time as the district's revision process for a given curriculum is is up for review. And we believe this will help collect and collate this feedback and we believe improve the revision process. So those are the three tier two recommendations that we make this evening. Thank you for your consideration. And I will pass the mic to my colleague Thon. Thank you so much.
Ask a weak question. What's your name, Tom Pogwag? Natasha, we stand Harris. So I said hello. What she any top was the greeting that my ancestors canonicals and my aunt to know me would say when they saw Roger Williams and the top of walk means friends. Quarkamook, I am at your service. I just want to start off by introducing myself. I was a Charahoe student and I have seven children, all who have gone through the Charahoe School System. My great great aunt Charlotte Bass was the first African American woman to run as a vice president. And slogan was win or lose, we win by raising the issues. And I think that is pretty poignant. That with the work that we are doing here today. So I am an educator, a teacher, I teach phys ed at a school in Rhode Island. And I'm also a cultural educator and traditional storyteller of the Nahahagosic or the Narragansett people. So nice to meet you, everyone who I haven't met. So tier three, so just to reiterate tier three, the recommendations that we are suggesting or will be suggesting kind of feeling out towards the end of the year that are not quick fixes, that they are things that we're hoping that in the future, through some time, that some of these might be implemented. So consider ways to actively recruit and retain a more diverse staff. Better align our staff demographics with our student body and especially our teachers that are standing up in the classroom right in front of our kids on a day to day basis. But I think it's important every aspect of of the school and and all all jobs. Consider ways to strengthen relationships with the Nahahagosic people or Indian tribe. And we have a bunch of created ideas for that. They're not all listed here. And an example of that is one that Charahoe has already done in having a tribal liaison role. And as I said, there are other ideas that we have, just connections with the Nahahagosic education department and and many other things. So if you have questions about what they could look like, I will answer those. But they also will be in the full report. And I just want to say the reason why we have that is as Endona said in the last thing, the Narragansett tribe is the only federally recognized tribe in Rhode Island. I mean, obviously was fundamental in there being a state of Rhode Island and our reservation lands are in right here within this community. And so that's a really unique situation that Charahoe has and we look at it as a great opportunity that we can work together. And I believe I am passing the mic back to Dan.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Carla, Katie and Thon. And, you know, well, we're really excited to hear some feedback from the school committee in just a moment, but just, you know, as a kind of final recap. So again, this was the practices work group. You still have one more working group, the curriculum group who will be giving a brief progress report about their kind of thought trajectories and potential formal recommendations in a few weeks. And then ultimately, what we're going to be doing is you all gave some really great feedback a few weeks ago on policy. Hopefully, we'll have a nice fruitful conversation with some feedback today. Bring that all back so that we can really work to assess that feedback so that that can inform our formal thought out written recommendations that we can provide to you as the school committee related to policy practice in curriculum. And then, you know, that of course would would be up to you all as as the school committee to move forward on all of that. So again, wanted to finish off with a quote before we opened up for to hear your feedback. It's the beauty of anti racism is that we don't have to pretend to be anti racist. Anti racism is the commitment to fight racism wherever we find it, including in ourselves, and it's the only way forward. So with that said, again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to provide this this progress report. Thank you for your dedication to diversity, equity, inclusion and justice. And we're excited to hear if you have any feedback for us to bring back.
I'd like some of the school committee. Okay, Ms. Ms. Chambers, you're you have your hand raised? Oh, you're, I can't hear you. Okay, so she doesn't have her hand raised. School committee members, would you care to provide some feedback or comments to the task force? Mr. Abbott, you have the floor. You need to unmute yourself, please, sir.
Um, I would suggest that you look into why there, I believe there are only two minority staff members at Charahoe. I could be wrong, but it's a very low number. And I'd like to know what you intend to do to encourage the district to hire more minorities.
Okay, well, that is one of their their goals. Thank you very much, Mr. Abbott. Ms. Juisty, you have the floor.
Thank you. So if I understand the charge of the school committee tonight, it is to encourage you to keep going if we think you are on the right track and encourage more work on on these specific tiers. Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Juisty, that is correct.
Okay, so I would like to say, yes, I'd like to see more work on these tiers. I think it's a it's a great first stab at it. I like the way that you have described them all. And I think the work is important. So I guess I'd like you to continue to work on them and look forward to more specific recommendations as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juisty. Mr. Day and then Mr. Luzon. Mr. Day, you have the floor.
Yes, I I was encouraged by some of the recommendations here. I think a number of these could be implemented within the next school committee meeting as such. I don't think that they need to be really that much brain power put to put to something to allow in the 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 graduation situation there with the with the stalls and stuff like these are things, the small things that that we can do, I think, to to prove that we are listening, that we are trying to be more inclusive with with people that feel that they haven't been included in the Charahoe district. So I'm a lot more encouraged by this particular session than we were the last session. The last session got into such a dog and pony show there that I don't think anybody got much of a much of a warm, comfortable feeling walking away from that one. This one here, I think, was was more more direct to the point and and things that we can do in a very short period of time to to lighten the load a little bit. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Day, Mr. Luzon, and then there's a number of school committee members that have their hands raised. Mr. Luzon, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to go back to tier run tier one recommendations, the first two bullet points. I think because once this pandemic is over, we will most definitely, I think our society will be changing. We will be doing a lot more virtual, but that doesn't mean in the future, folks, that you folks can't visit us in person. We will, we start going live. We'd love to see you there. We'd like to see more than eight people show up. It'd be wonderful to see fifty, a hundred, two hundred people at school committee meetings. And my second point is the consider making a permanent subcommittee. That's a novel idea. It doesn't just have to be school committee members. It can be people from the community. The subcommittee right now for the facilities is both. So I'm just throwing that out there. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luzon. Ms. Ms. McAllister, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment. I had an opportunity to listen in on a few of the recordings. I wasn't able to be at your live meetings, but I want you to know that I was very impressed by the work that you're doing. And the three tiers seem to be right on task, on focus, on where you should be. So I would hope you'll continue that work and bring back your findings to us. It's, I would encourage anybody who are everyone to take a moment or take a little bit of time to listen into these recordings because they're informative and educational. I I took in so much and I found that I was really engaged in them and really didn't want to leave. So I thank you for that work you're doing and the focus and hope you'll just continue. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. McAllister. Mr. Stahl, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I would like to express agreement with a lot of the comments that we've heard so far. There are a lot of things in here that I think are really good and really solid. I think there are some really good practical things. And I think there's some very doable things. And I think there's things that, you know, my my for lack of a better word, my gripe last meeting was that it seemed like we were sort of picking some external things and bringing them in to the conversation. I think you've done a much better job with this with this particular packet of information of zeroing in on things that are particularly relevant in Charahoe and presenting some solutions and some ideas. So I think I feel like you heard that in our last meeting and responded to that. And I really appreciate it. I think there's a lot of good work there. My one thing that I'd like you to consider as you take a take away and move toward, you know, unpacking these further and going deeper into each area for your final presentation is for me, there are still some spaces that are missing. So in other words, what's here I like, but I think there are still areas that are missing. And that was my that is continues to be my challenge with this committee because I don't think that it was formed in as much of a well rounded way as it could have or should have been. I I want to make sure that we're addressing every kind of inequity, every kind of inequality, every kind of disparity, every every kind of area of marginalization or that sort of thing. And so it's been my concern right from the beginning in this that we talked about religious freedom, that we talked about respect and understanding for religious groups and their practices. So when I hear some cultural things mentioned, but I've said this at every single meeting where we've discussed this task force or heard from this task force. And I'm and it's still not coming back to me in anything that's being presented. So that's an area where I want you to hear tonight that I'm still not being heard. That's that's it's a it's a piece that's missing. And we had in our in our conversation tonight for our meeting an adjustment to the school calendar for a Jewish religious holiday. And I I think that, you know, it's important that those kind of things would be preemptively, proactively on your radar. Okay, so looking at any areas where people may be marginalized. And I even saw on there you had the guidance counselors being equipped. And that's one area where that might fall. I know in the middle school recently, we had a, I had a middle school student tell me that guidance counselors during advisory time were doing eastern religious meditation practices during advisory in the middle school. Now, you have to understand that that's exclusive of people of other religions. And you have to understand that that makes the people then that are in that room and feeling conflicted about that marginalized. I really feel strongly that this task force is missing the mark if we don't include that piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Mr. Mr. Callahan, you have the floor.
Thanks, Chair. So looking at the tier one recommendations, thank you, Carla, for presenting it. I like the the first and second one. I think there, I think everybody understands the importance of of that, being able to get a lot of people access to school committee and participation. Do you have for the second bullet is is there a date that the group has talked about already in terms of a handoff? Or is this just, you know, eventually the handoff you want to take place?
Can I?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Fitzgerald. Please answer that.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I I don't believe there was any, you know, specific date, but I think just by, you know, kind of the the naming of it of being a task force and being that it was so specific to, you know, initial recommendations through an anti racism lens related to policy practices in curriculum that our thoughts would be to have those initial recommendations around by, you know, hopefully by the end of the school year. And I think every, you know, it's been in the the conversations of the of the anti racism task force that, of course, this will, you know, we'll hand off this list of recommendations. And I think, not to speak for anybody else on on the committee, but I I do think that there is lots of folks who would love to to be there with the school committee if deciding when when you decide on what items you wish to push forward on to help provide, you know, that that insight along the way. So I don't believe there's any date at the, you know, when this this task force would be absolved. But the idea of having a a permanent committee, as Carla mentioned, you know, around these topics and even to an earlier point around diversity, equity, inclusion and justice in general for a lot of the other inequities, maybe our our students or staff face. So I don't know if any of that was defined and anybody feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but just about formalizing that and into Mr. Luzon's point as well, being a collaborative of school committee members and community like we have on on the anti racism task force where community members are present and and all viewpoints are able to really help move the work forward.
Chair, could I also contribute to the answer to that question? So Dr. Callahan, when I had initially proposed this to the school committee and I've I've spoken about this in some of the meetings, on the anti racism task force meetings, I I envisioned letting the task force work through the summer. So as Dan said, that the the idea would be that the final report, right, that the, you know, the the culminating reports, the school committee would happen by the end of the school year. And then the school committee would determine specifically what actions they may want to take. Mr. Day was absolutely right in that there's a few things that probably don't need to wait. Have the summer to work through with the superintendent in the district during all of that development time. And then by fall, the school committee would then decide, right, is it time then to dissolve that task force and look at something more permanent, thinking about when we actually approve them. Anything sooner would actually be less than a year, which is is not typically, um, this is not good practice. So I hope that kind of rounds out that answer as well.
Thank you.
It does. Thank you. And Chair, with your permission, I'd like to ask a couple final or make a couple of final comments to the committee. So I guess the last one on the tier ones, Carla, in terms of the third bullet, very interested in see what kind of language that the task force is proposing in in order to kind of codify what those or how we would allow those students to wear that. And we have dress code policies and so on. So it would ultimately have to have some language around how that was was deployed. So I'm looking forward to that language. And then Katie, for the tier two recommendations, I really liked the first one. I really believe that you can't truly assess kind of any gaps in your disciplinary process unless you're tracking it, right? And so I think having a an understanding of how discipline is applied within our district, when within our schools, within school to school, within classroom to classroom. So I think that's important. So I like that first one. And then I guess the the last one on tier three, Thon, thank you for the the comments there. You did mention on the second bullet that there was additional language. You just gave one example. So it'd be interesting to see if the task force could scope out what those other things were that that you thought the the committee would like to to hear about. And then thank you all for tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. We have Phyllis Penhallo. Did I say your name right? And then Mr. Grant, Caleb Grant would be up next. You have the floor, Ms. Ms. Penhallow?
Hi, thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to the task force. Can I add just two points? The first point, I'd like to agree with David Stahl about our religious freedom being a part of it. And there are some students that do feel uncomfortable with some practices that may be not looked at religious, but are happening in some of the school districts, whether it's meditation or yoga in elementary school. So I do think religious freedom has to be looked at, so that would be great if, if that can be added. And then the second point I have is, um, for those specific recommendations in the classroom, would there be some kind of assessment? So I love these great ideas and I love these great suggestions, but it seems like right now, are they just suggestions? Like, do we know they work? Are the evidence-based practice? If we're gonna put something in the classroom and make a lot of changes, would it be like built in assessment to see that the suggestion that we made is actually going to be effective? But thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, do you want to, Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have a comment or question about that?
Yeah, um, so I think, thank you for, for the, the feedback. Already have a great page of notes here, so thank you, everybody. I think with, with that thought there, um, we tried to condense this, so it was as digestible in this format today on these slides. But, um, the working group, we have, you know, pages of pages of things that we're trying to boil down into that kind of concrete, you know, language that we can then, you know, hand over to the, to the school committee. So hopefully some of that will be in there. And to that last point, I think that's so important. Each of our committees has made sure that we've put an emphasis on data-driven recommendations. So part of our process has been trying anything that is currently available, that, you know, receiving some of that from the district to help inform the recommendations. And anything that, that, you know, we don't currently have, a recommendation would be, um, similar to the one around the, the discipline to do a, you know, an assessment, better understand what's happening and then use that data to help inform those. So, um, great point there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Grant, you have the floor?
Thank you very much. Just briefly, I wanted to give a bunch of thanks to the task force for its presentation. Um, and in the interest of time, I'll just be, try and be really brief. I, like Phyllis Penhallow, I really appreciated David, David Stahl's point about, uh, religious freedoms being a piece of it. And I, I think it's awesome that he brought that. And I, and in my mind, in terms of tier one point two, that's been kind of on the back of my mind in terms of going forward, what a permanent subcommittee would look like. I do think it's really important to have, as Reverend Stahl said, everybody at the table, to get this, to have a space for everyone to talk about equality and inclusion and, um, exclusion. And I think though, my concern would be, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put up a speed bump for the work the task force is doing right now. I, I want the task force to continue with its work and where it's maybe imperfect and where there's some criticisms, use that to, to design the permanent subcommittee. Because to my mind, I, I know that they're working really hard and I know it's hard to include everybody at the table. And so let's look at that in perfection and say, like, for example, I'd love it, Mr. Stahl, if you're able to be at the next meeting or whenever, obviously be there when we're talking about the permanent subcommittee. What does that look like? Do you have your connections in the, um, you know, other clergy in the area? You know, who can we bring to the table to have, uh, to have everybody there? Uh, because I think that, um, that's vitally, vitally important moving forward to have a, a space for everybody. I, I don't want to stop the work the task force is doing, but I think a permanent, for a permanent subcommittee, that's, that's vital, um, for that. Hope I made sense. Thank you, everybody, for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Um, okay, I think, I don't see any other hands raised. So we'll, we'll, I think this, uh, the task force again for the presentation, that was, uh, very well done. And I appreciate all the work that you've been doing, um, on behalf of the Cherahoe School, you know, our kids and our, and our community. So, um, that's, with that said, we're gonna move on to sub D now. So, oh, well, I, I, I seem to have, okay, I have, someone has their hand raised. Uh, Cassie Algier, um, you're, you have the floor.
Hi, sorry, um, I was laying a little one down.
Oh, that's okay. You got in under the wire.
Sorry. So I was looking, um, on tier two, when, um, I think it was Carla who was talking. She had talked about, um, trying to make sure that everybody was included. And as far as, um, students of race being divided, um, like looking at it in class. I wonder if there's a way, like, if they can look into kind of taking away the checkbox when people are being put into classrooms. I don't know if there's any research on that. Um, I also wanted to give input that I do agree that maybe making this something that's more all-inclusive, where it's not just focused on anti-racism, but yes, also including everything, like, um, the, uh, religious diversities, all of that. So that way people can include that on their cap and gowns, whatever they feel helps them. Um, I don't know if looking forward, because right now it's the anti-racism task force. So you have the word racism in it. So I don't know if maybe I don't want to be that person, like, but I don't know of taking the word racism out and just saying, like, coming up with a different way for the subdivision that's supposed to be made. Because while, yes, racism is something that we don't want, if this is something that's supposed to include everybody, maybe making it so it's not just, okay, anti-racism. Um, because then that's where I think people kind of sway from looking at all of the things. So maybe looking to come up with a different name, so then it's more inclusive. I don't know a better word for that, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Ms. MacRusso has her hand up and Mr. Day, you're next, after Lafferty Lisa. Ms. MacRusso, you have the floor? Um, are you still muted?
Yeah, okay. So I said I won't take up much time. I want to yield some time to Bill and then I just wasted the 10 seconds on mute. I'm so sorry. Um, so this task force actually has a, a fairly narrow definition. I've, I've taken quite a few notes as well. Um, and there's been a couple of comments about do more, expand more, have everything, everyone. That's actually right, we, we actually have a charge and they open and close with that charge. The next committee, right, or another committee can always be formed, right? We don't have to have this one committee address all of these issues. We can diversify, we can actually delegate. Um, the passion that I'm hearing tonight for the inclusion of religious freedom in a conversation, um, whereas that may, that's not going to necessarily fit into, uh, the curriculum group next week. But why not address the health and wellness committee? Like, we have a whole nother committee, the health and wellness committee. They may be able to pick this up right now, right? It may be part of their purview right now. So I think that this absolutely should can, this conversation. I just, I, I want us to, as a school committee, and maybe Gina, you can help, guide that it doesn't all have to be tasked to the anti-racism task force. There are other subcommittees that can help with this work, um, and bring all of these ideas in because they're all ideas we need to discuss. I just don't know that they're all the ideas the anti-racism task force needs to discuss. Um, and I'll save the rest for at the end of the meeting of future agenda items. But I, I really think we can move forward with that conversation. Um, let's, let's look at the other subcommittees.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Day and then Mr. Stahl.
Uh, yes, uh, Chair, just, uh, just very quickly, when we, uh, when we have been holding our meetings in person, uh, one of the things that we always requested from someone coming on board would be that they identify themselves by name and town. Kind of gotten away from that a little bit, uh, at these meetings, so I'd just like to, uh, remind.
Thank you. Yes, no, thank you for that reminder. I, I need to put that into my practice. I appreciate that, Mr. Day. Mr. Stahl, you have the floor?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, to, to say, I, incorporating the religious freedom part, the reason why it's here and not in another subcommittee somewhere is because this is, this was my concern from the get-go that the charge, um, that Lisa's referring to is to approve the formation of a task force to examine policies, practices and curriculum through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion and justice. And if you go back and watch our board meetings, in those conversations, in the formation of this, it was, but are we gonna address all areas of inequality or injustice or inequity? And, and where there's exclusion happening and the answer kept, was continually yes. And so, you know, my, my pushing for some of these, these other areas is because that was my expectation. But then that's, that was not what was being delivered. So I, I want to point out that that's the reason I keep bringing these things up. And I, and, and I, I was gonna save it for a, a later agenda item as well. But every time we've discussed this task force, and before it was even formed, I asked for representation for the Asian, uh, community. And every time that got pushed aside. And I, I, I understand that, that most of you watch the news and you're aware that that's even more of a pressing issue right now, um, with stopping Asian hate and, and being aware of the, the biases against people in the Asian community. That's the reason why I pushed for that from the beginning here. And so the idea is just, i- i- and this is, this is the dangerous place. When you create a group that's gonna deal with inclusion and inequity across the board, and that's what the charge says. But then you only pick certain areas to address it or with certain groups. Or it makes it appear like just the PEP projects, just the things that we're passionate about. So I do think that there, some of these things will be doled out to other, other committees or other places. Or I think when we form a new subcommittee that's permanent and that replaces the task force, I do think it can be a, a group that just looks at inequality or inequity or marginalization or however you want to phrase it, to be more general, but encompass everything. And I do think it can be a more well-rounded group. But that was, that was some of the tension that's in this right from the beginning is that you, you sort of create something that's very open, but then only take select areas or select pieces to actually, um, deal with. So that's why I keep pushing more things and that's why I think it's relevant in the task force conversation, um, as opposed to just being pushed out to, uh, another group could deal with this. I want to make sure that somebody isn't feeling excluded by our efforts to be inclusive. That was, that's counterproductive.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Uh, Mr. And, uh, Mr. Luzon, uh, I'll give you the floor in a sec. Mr. Anderson has, um, he's had his hand raised. I didn't see him.
Sure. I, I, I just want to remind everybody what, again, um, what Ms. MacRusso said about what the charge of the committee was, uh, originally. Um, I also do want to make it very clear to the committee that religious issues under our constitution are treated differently. That is, is that I can't change whether I'm not, I'm African-American. I cannot change whether or not I'm Native American. I cannot change my sexual orientation. On the other hand, I can change my religion tomorrow if I so choose. Result of that is, is that we have different provisions in the constitution that address that, specifically the establishment clause. And I think that the school committee needs to be very careful to the extent that they are going to delve into the area of religion. I want to remind everybody, and we'll be talking about this later, and I'm looking forward to the conversation, that what ha, when we look at religion, it needs to be looked at from an objective perspective. Some of the remarks, for example, may have made, that a different people have made tonight, may have made some people on this, um, at this meeting very uncomfortable because they don't share the religious views of members of the school committee or members of the community. It's an objective standard, though, in terms of what is appropriate and what is not. But for the school committee to start getting into the area of religion, whether it's from the left or from the conservative right, the school committee needs to be very careful. So I, it is my strong suggestion that the school committee let the task force initiate its ta, task, make whatever remark, reports it wants, consider those reports and then deal with other issues to the extent they feel appropriate separately.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Um, Mr. Luzon and then, um, Phyllis, do you still have your hand up? Um, okay, Mr. Luzon, you have, you have the floor.
A- a- after John's statement, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other suggestions, comments to the task force? Again, I thank them for their work and, um, I'm sorry, was a hand raised? I don't.
Jason, Jay, um, Chair, Jason DePonte has his hand raised.
Okay, I don't, yeah, he, um, is he has his little hand up or no?
Actually physically raising his hand.
Okay, Mr. De, Jason DePonte, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I can't see you. I, it's, there's, yeah. So I apologize. Please, you have the floor?
That's okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, yeah, just to kind of piggyback on what was just said, I, I understand where Mr. Anderson is coming from. And I, I, I think it is a fine line that we don't want to cross. However, I don't think we want to discriminate against those who do have that religious background. And personally, I have three kids in this, in the district. We have a strong faith and the examples that were brought up with practicing meditation and stuff of that nature, personally, I would have a problem with. Um, so, uh, as much as I understand that we don't want to have religion preached in schools and pushed in the schools, I don't, I don't think we want to have other, um, forms of religion pushed onto our kids as well. So, um, so, uh, again, I think what was said as well is that being an inclusion task force, I think we want to be sensitive to all sides, uh, and have representation from all angles. Not necessarily to have the, 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 um, the agendas proactive, but to have a, uh, a reactive mechanism within the group to make sure nobody is, uh, nobody's being neglected or excluded. But, uh, but just wanted to get that out there and I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. DePonte. Okay, um, okay, we're gonna, Phil, Phyllis, you can have the last word and then we need to move on. Go ahead, Mrs. Pen, Ms. Penhallow. You have your hand raised. Do you need to speak?
Yep, I just want to, um, let people know that I, I do, am in agreement with what Jason just said and what David Stahl just said. And I heard what John Anderson said, but again, if it's equity, it's equity. And again, there are some practices, people may not think they're religious practices, but for some other people, they're offensive in the, and they're happening in schools and they're just accept it. And we just have to accept them. So it's good to know that there are things happening that aren't acceptable to some people. So if, if you're gonna use the word equity, then that has to be, um, just thought about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. So we are gonna close C. Thank you for everyone's comments and participation. And we'll move on to D. Mr. Stahl, um, this was an item that you requested, so I, I give you the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Um, in, in our minutes, uh, from the last meeting, which we'll review under consent agenda, um, this, this had two pieces. And I, there's only one piece listed here. So did you have an intention, Chair, of me only doing part of that?
Yes, I, um, I, I did want to get, I did want to get one of your recommend, uh, requests on for this. We'd actually fit it in for this meeting. Um, I made the decision at that, uh, about the second one, that I wanted the task force the opportunity to finish their work before we have the discussion on the second one. And that, I just made that decision. So that's, we're gonna, is that, you, do you still want the floor on D?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But I do have a question about how we decide when someone's agenda item will be put on.
Well, we, we usually try to meet and try to get every, we, well, we, we look at the timeframe, how much is on the agenda already? I'm sorry, Chair, I'm gonna interrupt you. That's not on the agenda at all. Right. That's true. That's the point. Okay, thank you. That can be an offline conversation, maybe. Thank you.
Okay. So, so Catherine, I like to keep things in the public meeting and feel free to help me out, Catherine. I ju, I just want to know, how do we decide which one we're gonna put on the agenda this time and which one we're going to?
John, would you, would you please?
Quarter, Chair, this is not for discussion on the agenda.
Thank you and thank you, Donna. I'm, yes, I'll try to move it on. Mr. Anderson, do you have a point?
No, I would simply agree with, uh, Mrs. Chambers, Ms. Juicy, that this is not an agenda, this is not on the agenda. And we are, live in a nation of laws and under the law, we have to post our agenda 48 hours in advance in multiple public buildings and on the Secretary of Web, State's website. And we need to follow the agenda that we have posted and given the notice to the public. It is unfair to the public to bring up topics that are not on the agenda, where the public does not have adequate notice.
Future agenda item, Dave.
Understood. I, I, I'm just asking because it was put in the minutes for tonight as it was a future agenda item and it's not on the agenda, just me asking openly, publicly. I am a stickler for the laws, Mr., uh, Mr. Anderson, you should appreciate that. So, um, I just wanted, uh, some clarification. So we'll move on with D and we'll talk about the, the second part of it after. Letter D says, um, "School Committee Liaison for Guidance and Support to Appoint Either an Additional or a Different Liaison." Um, I expressed last meeting that particularly in the March meeting, um, of the anti-racist task for, anti-racism task Of the anti-racist task or anti-racism task force, um. I felt like the meeting was kind of pulled in, um, in an unfavorable direction, an unproductive direction. And I felt like, um, our liaison, Lisa, uh, McCaruso, our liaison to that task force. Um, in some ways let us down a little bit. Um, by not, um. Not sticking to, as we've just talked about tonight, um. Open Meetings Act and Robert's Rules of Order and those type of things. Um, I think it's very important. One of the examples was that they, they were passing a motion to just have open-ended discussion on current issues. I know the superintendent and Mr. Anderson looked at that and, and I know that they've made some corrections as a task force. That's great. Um, and I think tonight's presentation demonstrated that they were, they, they put together a much more solid and, and on task presentation. But my, my question was, do we have someone else who could, uh, serve as our committee liaison in place of Lisa McCaruso? Or in addition to Lisa McCaruso? Maybe someone even more so than me, one of our members who's, who's really, uh, fluent. In, uh, Robert's Rules and Open Meeting Act and those types of things, in making sure that we keep the group. Um. Representing this board well and legally and appropriately.
Okay, um, I guess Ms. Chambers has her hand raised, but I guess we'll, we'll come back to you, Mr. Stoll in a second.
And I, as, as people discuss, I guess I'm looking for a volunteer of someone to join Lisa if they'd like to, so that I could make a motion.
Um, you probably have to make the motion first and it has to be seconded and then we would, um, then we would seek, uh. Uh, uh, people who are interested or, or candidates to serve on the committee. So, um, Ms. McAllister, do you have, do you have a motion, Mr. Stoll?
I move that we add a second, um, liaison to the task force from our school committee.
Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Abbott made a second, so we have a, uh, we have a, a first and a second to add an additional person on the task force. Now I can open up to, for discussion. Ms. McAllister, do you have, you have the floor and then Ms. Chambers, you're next.
Thank you. Um, as I said before, I, um, I've, I've listened and watched a few of the meetings and I can say, um. From my own viewing that Lisa is doing a remarkable job of leading that group and keeping them on task. She has spoken. Um. When the subject or the, the, um, topic got off, off topic and she brought them back and explained why. Um, she had to do that. And so I, I don't see why we would appoint somebody else to that position when she's doing. A very good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Ms. Chambers?
Yes, I'm going to, uh, reiterate what, uh, Linda McAllister just said. Um. I do, I have watched all but one of the meetings and I do believe that. Uh, Lisa is doing a great job in the role of liaison. She's not appointed the leader of this task force. So let's not misunderstand that. She is the liaison from the school committee. And I think she's doing a fabulous job in direct, in organizing that and communicating back and forth between the committee. The task force and the school committee, such as encouraging the presentations that we're having at these, these three. School committee meetings. On the other hand, also, I do not think that, that we need another school committee member to be a liaison, an additional meeting. Additional member, because to reiterate, everyone is invited. All of the school committee members can go to these meetings. And call point of order or whatever needs to be to, to encourage Robert rules, uh, are followed and everything else. So I would absolutely not vote for this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, Ms. Juicy, then Mr. Luzon, then Mr. Callahan. Catherine, you have the floor. Thank you. I too would not be in favor of additional oversight. I think it could, um, we run the risk of chilling the conversation. The meetings are public. Um, anybody can attend and, and give their thoughts on the meetings. And I, I also commend Lisa on the job she's done. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Juicy. Ms. Luzon, then Mr. Callahan. Ms. Luzon, you have the floor.
Yeah, the last meeting, I, I thought we said we weren't going to make it political. Boy, we just made this one political. Um, I'm gonna be the, the third person from Charlestown that totally agrees with, with the other two said. And, um, I, I, you know what? We almost made the mistake tonight. We have made the mistake in the past with, uh, the OMA. And guess what? There is a recourse that you can, you can, you could, uh, notify the Attorney General. He'll review it and he'll determine whether it was intentional or not. Um. And like I said, you know. We almost made the mistake tonight. Maybe we should be a little forgiving because it, I evidently it's not a pattern. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Luzon. Mr. Callahan and then Mr. Stoll. Mr. Callahan, you have the floor.
Uh, thanks, Chair. Yeah, I, I think that this has been touched on, but, uh, I'll just go ahead and echo, um. My colleagues sentiment. This is the chair's responsibility. So the task force has a chair and I think Maya is doing a great job of it. If she needs some coaching in terms of, you know. Some guardrails that, that, that can happen. And I think that that's a great solution for it, but she's running that committee or that task force, sorry. It's hers. And as Chair, it's going to be her responsibility. It's not Lisa's responsibility. Um, although Lisa there is there as the lead liaison to the school committee. Adding another school committee voice. It, it starts to get into kind of a control. And directioning of the task force, which I'm really uncomfortable with. I, I, I really want to see what they bring to us. Not where we guide them to end. So, um, I'm not going to be anything like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan, Mr. Stoll, and then Mr. Day. I see your hand is raised. Thank you.
So, uh, I, I do agree that, um, the liaison to the task force is not intended to be leading. And the chair should be leading those meetings and, uh, that should be their responsibility. And that was. Part of my concern. I heard that from the community, from, uh, someone that I've never even met before, who said, it appears that the school committee liaison is leading. The task force. And so I wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case. I wanted to make sure that we had some good balance there. I think I've said what I need to say about it. Um, and I hope that it's just taken under advisement and taken as direction for, for how we want this to go as, uh. As a school committee and for our liaison. And I respectfully, uh, rescind my motion.
Uh, okay, and I, I need, Mr. Abbott, do you also rescind the motion? Yes, Mr. Abbott. Uh, Donna, uh, both motions were rescinded. Uh, Mr. Day, you still have the floor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stoll. Mr. Day?
Uh, no, I was just going to suggest that we cut off the, uh, discussion because it appeared that the, this motion was not going to pass and we needed to spend a lot more time on it.
Thank you, Mr. Day. I really appreciate it. I really do. I appreciate your help. Um, so, uh, that, since that was rescinded, then we can move on to discussion E. Um, I mean, or letter E, discussion on students' needs and supports during the pandemic. Am I giving the floor to Ms. Card? Okay.
Um, tonight we have school counselors, social workers and psychologists, uh, here to discuss the needs that our students. Um, have had during the pandemic and the support offered during the pandemic. This was requested by Vice Chair Catherine Juicy.
Who, Catherine, would you like the floor? Sure. Um, the impetus for this particular agenda item is, uh, we're a year into schooling and in a pandemic. And I wanted an update on how the kids are and the supports that we've had for our students, um, both in and outside of the classroom and, um. How we're supporting them. And as we, uh, plan for the rest of the school year. I want to be cognizant of the fact that this has been a stressful time for our students. And I want to be ever mindful of that as we plan for the rest of the school year. Thank you. So I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna start with Jen Durkin, who helped put the group together. So she can let us know who wants to start.
I'll see, unmuted me? I'm, I'm, okay.
Jeff.
So I met with, um, all of the staff probably about two weeks ago, um, sharing your concern. And they had the opportunity to meet, um, several times prior to this meeting. And they're really going to bullet, you know, their experiences at the elementary, middle school. And high school, uh, level. Um. And. Honestly, you know, once they do that feeling, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer any questions beyond that. Um. It ha- it was a difficult start, but you know, the kids are in, um, and we're so happy they're there. And, um, so I have Lisa Smith, Dr. Lisa Smith, representing the elementary. School. I have Megan Anderson, uh, a school psychologist recommend, uh. Discussing the middle school and I have Dr. Lori Addison, uh, discussing the high school. Um, they're all on here. Um, most of them, I believe, I saw most of their names. So, um, we'll let them share their stories.
I can. They should all.
Okay, I, I can go first.
This is, well, this is Dr. Smith. Uh, Dr. Smith is a school psychologist at, um, Richmond Elementary School.
Yes, I'm at Richmond. I have, I've been a school psychologist for thirty-three years and twenty-three of them have been with Cherahoe. All twenty-three have been at Richmond. I was at Richmond Ashway for a little bit and then Richmond Hope Valley, but now I'm at Richmond, um, full-time. And it's been a great twenty-three years. Um, so I had met with the two other elementary school psychologists, um. Angela Current and Mary Kate Simpson. And we talked about what were we seeing? And we broke it up to really kind of the beginning of the school year and now and what our concerns are. The beginning of the school year with the students, they were all excited to be back in school. I mean, it was wonderful to see them. Um, they were all excited, but. Every year at elementary, especially those kindergarten and first graders, you know, you see a lot of crying, a lot of the separation. We saw a lot more of that, not only in kindergarten and first grade, but my fourth graders, third grader, second grade. A lot of them, you know, were crying, wanted to be in school, but wanted to be back home, missing their parents. They were stressed about the schoolwork, stressed about the virus and everything else. Um. They were worried about home situations because they had been home, if parent lost a job, things were stressed at home and they felt it too. Um, they were also worried if they were going to get sick. Um, if their parents would get sick, if they were going to get sick and bring it home to them. Um, it looked like a lot of crying, easily distracted, a lot of impulsivity and, and they were just being out of their routine. As a psychologist, basically tried to be very supportive, listened, reassured, were very welcoming, a lot of check-ins with students. A lot of checking with students. Um. Not only students, but can't. The beginning of the year with the teachers too. Everybody, we were all anxious and stressed. Um. The teachers needed to get the classrooms in order. They were worried about their students. They were worried about their own health, their family's health. Um, they wanted to be supportive but worried about like, okay, you know. What about, like, where are these kids coming from? What did they miss from being out for the third of the school year? Um, you know, teaching DL and in-person at the same time, getting these kids back into routine. Um, some of the teachers who were being evaluated were extremely anxious about that. Um, the technology, you know, using all the technology and then getting prepared, you know, stuff. For home and school. So everyone was really stressed, but really happy to be back. Again, I tried to be supportive. We wanted to, I want, for myself, I wanted to attend more CPTs and to check in with. Teachers, but so many other things going on with the students that I tried to touch base with as many teachers to make sure everybody was okay. Um. A lot of the DL parents were also reaching out at this time because they were having problems at home. They were stressed. They needed assistance. They were trying to. Be the, you know, surrogate teacher for their students. Um, a lot of them wanted therapy. A lot of them were thinking their kids were ADHD or learning disabled and needed that support also. Some guidance on, on how to balance their, um. You know, working at home as well as helping their students. Cause elementary students are not very independent. Um, especially those younger grades, very difficult. Um, so a lot of them, you know, a lot of support as a psychologist, reaching out, talking with them, doing a lot of Zoom meetings, a lot of phone conversations with, with parents. Um, set up schedules, behavior plans, try to calm everyone down. Um. Now, okay, so now we're, you know. Two-thirds of the way into the school year, people are still anxious, but, um. I think everyone has calmed down to a degree. The kids, I think, are still very happy to be back in school. Still not seeing a lot of the crying, but the anxiety is showing up in different ways. A lot of behaviors that. Sometimes kids that we wouldn't expect behaviors to come from, a lot of silliness, goofiness. Distractibility, we're still seeing. Although they're back more in routine and they're getting the work, they had to build that stamina again to be in the classroom for seven hours. Um. And I think, so those kids are, um. They've come a long way, the in-person students. I know for myself, my caseload in some ways has increased. I see at least forty-three students on a regular basis. I have currently for myself at Richmond, I have seven groups. Plus two anxiety groups. I've never run anxiety groups before. I have ten students that I'm running an anxiety group for, and I broke them up into. K and one and three and four. So I'm seeing a lot of students plus still touching base with other students. So it's a lot of support, a lot of listening, um, a lot of dealing with behaviors that aren't necessarily. What you would normally see, um, they're kind of different. Um, I also, as an elementary school psychologist, this year I have had two students at the partial program at Bradley. That has, in all my years, I think I can count on one hand. Maybe I've had three students all these years in partial programs. This year I have two. And I think a lot of it is, yes, there's stuff, but I think it's built from being home, the distance, the stress on the family. Also with older siblings, um, we can't forget that the younger kids are impacted by their older siblings. Who have had, you know, social life and everything else upturned. So a lot of that stress. Um. I think everyone has kind of settled more into doing distance. We've had a lot of students return. And as they return, um, what I notice is it starts again with them. The anxiety, um, some of the kids who've been out a long time, it's really getting them back into the routine. Um, we've had a lot of kids just return now and it's getting them back into being students, back into routine. We have a lot of students who don't have the stamina. So again, it's a lot of support, a lot of team meetings to help. The teachers deal with the behaviors they're seeing from these students, um, now that. We're not used to seeing at this time of the year for a lot of students. Um. I know, and the distance learners we have, you know, concern about their mental health. Um, some of them not showing up for meetings, um, not turning in work. So those gaps in learning we're concerned about. Um, a lot of times when I meet with students or teachers will tell me, we're seeing a lot of kids that look sad or depressed on distance learning. An increase in behavior concerns. Some have gained a lot of weight from not moving. And that concerns me health-wise. Um. Right now in school, even though everyone's kind of gone with the flow and kids are great. I mean, I was worried about the younger kids wearing masks. I would say most of the kids are awesome. Awesome. I thought we were gonna have a lot more trouble, but now kind of what we're seeing, I think, is a little more COVID fatigue. Um, people are tired of being so separated, not being able to have a life, always wearing the mask. Um, not having their lives normal. Um. So we're still seeing some of those like silly behaviors on kids. Um, one of the things I worry about as a school psychologist is the kids at the elementary level, a lot of times they work together in groups. They can't do that. So those social skills that they gain, it's very difficult to do it when the desks are so far apart and they can't play together. Um. Outside, they're a little more together, but you know, we have a recess of twenty minutes. So, you know, those, those social skills that we learn, I worry about, although, um. And one of the things we also, we've had an increase in referrals. Um, I know for Richmond, ten new referrals this year as of February. Hope Valley's had six, Charlestown five, Ashway eight. We've had, um, requests for clinicals in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four. From now twenty to twenty twenty-one, we've had ten. So there's a lot more concern about that mental health. Um. People, a lot of teachers are concerned about, um. You know, the gaps, parents are concerned about gaps, ADHD, learning disabilities. We've also had increase in. Um, concerns with referrals from early intervention and preschoolers, a lot more needs that way too. So. We've made a lot of gains, but there's still a lot of concerns at the elementary level at some of the behaviors. And just that easily distractibility and the silliness and the gaps in learning and the concerns of, you know, where those gaps are. Um, and the referrals that we're getting because people think the gaps is a learning disability. No, there's, there's holes in places. Um. But I do have to say that. But I do have to say that, um. Being in the schools, the resilience I have seen from the teachers, the staff and the students is impressive. Everyone is working together, yeah, we're tired of the masks, the social distancing, the limited life, but you know what? They, everyone is working hard, the kids are, but I do worry about. What it's gonna look like for them and I also worry about the kids that look like they're okay, but they're not, um. So I'm trying to be cognizant of all the students, I touch base with a lot of students, I meet with a lot of students. With teachers, I just worry that, am I doing enough, um?
Thank you, that's great, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so Megan, actually Megan Anderson is our, our school psychologist at the middle school. If you can share a little bit.
Hi guys, yes, my name's Megan Anderson, I am the school psychologist at the middle school, um, it's my second year here. I also am a graduate of Cherahoe, um, two thousand and twelve. Um, so at the middle school, it's a bit different, I actually have, um, a social worker on site that I work closely with. Um, during the day, we definitely rely on each other to, um, service the students, especially as the, um. Need has increased this year, we also collaborate with a social worker who is working from home. Who mostly services, um, DL students, um, I know she particularly is working with DL students that, um. Are having a hard time to engage, um, that's been a particular, um, problem that she's been focusing on. Um, so as Lisa mentioned, definitely the mental health needs and behavior of our students have. Increased since the pandemic started, um, and because of that caseload has definitely increased as well. Um, many students that wouldn't have been on our radar before, um, are coming up to need to check-ins. Or are struggling with issues such as anxiety, um, in the beginning of the year, we saw a lot more anxiety related to COVID. But now it seemed to be just general anxiety, um, so students that, you know, regularly could have been fine. In the classroom with your own supports really need some more, uh, one-on-one supports with us. So either having anxiety attacks, sometimes taking, you know, as as many as two hours, um, to calm them down. Can happen during our day, um, definitely have had more students in either the partial program in Bradley or, um, full-time. Um, there has been one student, um, that has been in a hospital program for the last four months. Due to anxiety issues, um. Also have noticed more, uh, behavioral issues in class. Um, thinking because they're not allowed to, you know, move from class to class, they're stuck in the same group of kids. Each day, so they quickly find out how to get on each other's nerves. So, um, a lot of the times, it's a lot of pure drama, um, and behaviors associated with that. Um, so working with those students to help kind of navigate conflicts and also give them coping skills for various things that may happen. Um, we also have a population of students in the middle school that need a lot of behavior support. Um, including some new students that came to us, um, this year as well. Um, so these need frequent de-escalation, behavior plans collaborating with a lot of, uh, staff. Um, as Lisa mentioned, um, just like supporting our students, we are there to support staff as well. Um, I did give a PD presentation before the start of school about how to support anxious students in the classroom. Um, some things I noticed were some of our students with, um, autism. Um, don't really understand social distancing, so we have to kind of, um, help them with that. Um, although this has gotten better as the year has progressed and as well as just kids who have ADHD or those impulsive behaviors, again, sitting in that room. Um, not having as much movement breaks, so the teachers are good about allowing that. Um, those breaks to happen in their schedule, again, it's just, um, it can be a lot for some kids. Um, and then myself and the social worker that's on site has been working with the new Gina, the middle school. To really collaborate, um, for a more integrated approach between behaviors and mental health. So it's not only an effort to de-escalate, um, but teach the students the skills, um, and to give them. Resources for managing their emotions in a productive way so that hopefully those behaviors don't, um. Happen again, it's not just they're given a consequence, it's that they can, you know, learn those skills to keep that from happening again. Um, so overall, I think that's a good summary of, you know, what's currently happening. And I'll be open to any questions after the rest of the people talk, thank you.
Lauren, I don't see Dr. Lori. Is Lori on?
I, I am.
Okay, Dr. Lori Adesina Paradi is our, uh, psychologist at the high school.
Yeah.
Um, so she'll share her experience, um, you know, at that level.
Yeah, so I work at the, um, the high school, it's my fourth year there, I work along with, um, two social workers as well. Um, I'm, I'll keep this pretty brief because I'm, I'm really not gonna, um, go through everything that, that Lisa and Megan went through. But I would say at the high school level, we're seeing, um, a lot of relief from the kids that they are able to learn in person. I think that's the best thing, that physical structure, they were really craving that and so, um, I think that's been the greatest thing for them. Um, you know, there's lots of kids that are experiencing anxiety, depression, I mean, I think given the times, that's expected. Um, but I think we are in terms of negatives that we're seeing, um, a lot of the kids, um. Who are choose to have chosen distance learning are looking to get back into the school full-time, I think that's something we're seeing. Um, and then you see kids who are choosing distance learning who have a lot of anxiety. Uh, which is not the best thing for them, you know, and so it's gonna be difficult to get that back, them back into the school. Um, couple other things, um. You know, a lot of kids maybe trying to recover and recruit credits from the spring, credits that they've lost, so. You know, maybe an uptick in the referrals to CALA, you know, trying to recover some of those credits. Um, but I do see, um, the missed social opportunities as being significant at the high school. So the kids, you know, fearing that loss of prom, prep, you know, pep rallies, um. Those opportunities, sports, graduation, there's a lot of anticipatory anxiety revolving around that. So, um, I know that the, the parent teacher association is trying to, or a couple of the parents are trying to really put things in place for those kids. So they have a unique experience this year. Um, and then in terms of strategies that we are, we've been doing interventions, we've been doing, you know, counseling support, meeting kids individualized needs. Um, and to, and trying to help them with the social opportunities, we've been trying to connect them with COVID-safe type of social opportunities, maybe jobs. Um, certain kids who, uh, maybe with some developmental disabilities, camps, things like that, so that they can get reconnected socially. Um, you know, um, other than, you know, at-risk meetings, home visits, we're doing all of those. And we did create a, um, uh, student support page on the Canvas, um, platform. That allows kids to connect to some resources, um, at will, so they have that option as well and we've had quite a, quite a lot of interest in that.
Thanks, Laura.
Well, I, I thank you all, um, Jennifer, Ms. Durkin, you, you, you were all set, those are our three presenters.
Yeah, well, they're all here, um, they all volunteered to be on here. Um, but we represented, uh, three from each building, so.
Well, we appreciate you coming tonight, actually staying late. I also wanna just tell you on behalf of the school committee and I'm sure they're all, they'll chime in. Um, for all the work that you're doing to support our students and their families, I know it's a real hard. Time for a lot of us and, um, I can't imagine what, what it's like, um, trying to. Support these kids on a regular daily basis, with the positive attitudes that you all have, it's obvious to me that you're all very positive. Um, Ms. Juicy and then Mr. Luzon.
I'll, I'll let Mr. Luzon go first.
Okay, Ms. Luzon, you can go first.
Uh, Jen, has, has your budget increased this past year due to the pandemic?
In what way, Craig?
Compared to other years, as, or is it circumstantial, such as Bradley, such as, et cetera? What, I think it's been presented.
No, we've been able to, um, most of, most of the, um, no, it has not. Most of the kids that we, we have been able to deal with, um, their emotional issues on campus with CALA, with the support of CALA. Um, DCYF, um, has placed multiple children outside the district. Um, which is out of our control, um, and so that has increased our DCYF placements. Um, and you may have seen that in the budget, actually. And actually, in, in addition to that, um, there, DCYF is actually placing. Um, and has the ability to place kids that are non-IEP students. Um, out of district and residential placements that we have to fund as well, um, we've had two of those this year.
So, w- we haven't seen any increases, but we may.
Um, I did see an increase, we were able to absorb it.
Okay.
Um, but I've just recently just had two more and, um. We have had an increase in enrollment in the district, um, with some of the housing in Richmond. With some very needy students and they all have IEPs, they're extremely needy. Um, to this point, um, we've been able to deal with them, but, um. I think we were be, we were able to budget and I think Ned and Gina kind of challenged me a little bit, but, um. I, I think we, you know, we were able to, uh, coordinate most of that.
Well, I was, I was just basically trying to, we have a budget due here to be voted on soon, I was hoping that. You know, I could at least show people in additional cost, but I couldn't show it here, but thank you very much.
No, I, I think we're, I think we're in a good place, um, when I proposed my budget to Gina and Ned and Jane. Um, I did get alert them to the anticipated need because DCYF is something that's completely out of my control.
Yes, we know that.
Um, and, and we have seen an increase in those placements, so. Um, but we were hopefully, I think we were able to mitigate some of those and keep it reasonable. Um, but also be able to take care of RICAS.
Right, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, Ms. Juicy, Ryan, you had your hand up, are you all set? Okay, um, Ms. Juicy, you have the floor.
Thank you, um, so I asked for this, um, presentation because I suspected that the, the data you presented would be exactly the data that you presented. Um, I have three children in the school district, I have a sixth grader, I have a ninth grader and I have a twelfth grader. And so I've seen, a- and it should be mentioned, I have a husband who's an elementary school principal. And so I have seen the toll that working and living in a pandemic as it relates to education has taken on all of them. And, and my family, um, my family unit, um, so. I wanted people to hear this, especially the school committee, to hear that, um. No matter what you think the cause of stress is for our children, whether it was schools closing, whether it's the, you know, overreach of the government, pick your poison. Um, kids are struggling, there is a lot more stress, as we've heard from the experts here tonight, it really. The why isn't as important as the fact that there is a lot more stress amongst our children. And so I think we need to be ever mindful of that, as we talk about educating children, it's not just reading, writing and arithmetic. It is also social and emotional health, um, and we might all disagree on certain ways to help with social emotional learning. But it is really a cornerstone of Cherahoe and I think we need to, to consistently be reminded of that. And as we close out the school year, um. I will say again, if there are ways that we can help our students to feel more comfortable as they return to full-time schooling. You know, I'm not surprised that you're seeing kids who are having a, a hard time acclimating again to a seven-hour school day. Um, it's hard and I think we need to be mindful of that too, um, do we need final exams this year? Is this a year that we need to have that? Um, I wouldn't have said this is the year that we needed to have RICAS testing, but that's out of our control. Um, what can we do for our students to help support them emotionally? Because when we talk about mental health, I think people get very squeamish about it because they think it's always gonna parlay into mental illness. And so I think we need to remind everybody too that you can talk about mental health. And you can talk about your mental health well-being without talking about any mental illness and being diagnosed with a mental illness. That is not the goal here, is to diagnose all of these children with mental illness. Um, the goal is to support them and to meet them where they are and that's really the charge of a public school.
Absolutely, and I have to, you know, Catherine, we have so many supports and, um, you, you have all been so very supportive of. Uh, my department and my staff, um, and I know they're all stretched very thin, very thin. Um, but we do have a lot of supports in place for them right now, we have plans in place and. And really, there, there are a number of children that were, that they work with, that we're working with and. Not only the special ed staff or the school psychologist, social workers, but the general ed staff are really. Working so hard and the principals to like really work with these kids. And know that it's really trauma-based and, um, it's not necessarily a disability, it could be. However, it's all about the trauma that they're experiencing in their own lives i- in and out of school. And, um, they're working really hard and I, I can't commend them enough. Um, I, you know, I have the great, I have, I have the greatest staff, so I just can't say enough for all of them, so. And all of the support that you give us, although we would like more.
Sorry, sorry, Jennifer, Ms. Mac Russo, you have your hand up.
Yes, let me take it down now before I forget. Um, Catherine, thank you so much for bringing this to us, thank you all of you that presented tonight. Um, I was wondering if you could take a moment to speak to, um, the type of supports or guidance. Um, you know, not monetary, uh, monetary guidance, but in terms of how you're also helping to support our, our students of color. And the, the other issues that are happening as well and how are they coming to you, are they presenting in the office? Um, if you could talk a little bit about that demographic earlier, it, it is a, um, an issue that. Um, the task force is gonna look at exploring and I think because they're on, it would really benefit them to understand. If, is there any differentiation, do you have any feedback or do you need any additional support around? How to counsel, um, our, our BIPOC student population in addition to what you've, you've done now?
So part, part of, um, you know, part of the federal grant, um, we were disproportionate. So I have a clinical psychologist that works at the elementary level. Um, and is working with every elementary and the middle school. Um, and working on, or, and with the, the thing about that, a particular grant is we can work with general ed and special ed students. And it's a prioritized group, so we don't have an over-populized group of, uh, students like that. Um, you know, there may be a handful of them and we, we work with them, they work with them all. Um, at every level, at every grade level, every elementary, we brought it to the middle school. Um, we do have some consultation, so.
I'm sorry, just, just one sec, I, I've learned a lesson that, um, that we can sometimes talk in ed speak. And it's not, it's not understood by our everybody, so when you say we have, we're disproportionate, I don't know that everyone knows what that means. And when you're saying we, them, who's them?
When you. We were, we were identified a couple of years ago to be disproportionate in the area. Um, for Native Americans, identifying them under IDEA, special education. Um, you know, at, working with Jane and, uh, Jane Daly in her office, I mean, I challenge, right? A lot of the students that come into our district are already a, a Native American. Or, uh, multiple cultures are already identified before they come into our district, so we did not identify them, someone else did. So, because of that, a proportion of, of our, our grant, we need to, um. Fund certain programs and supports for those kids, so that's what we have done for the past two years. That's in our grant, um, I believe you have reviewed the grant, um. So, we support all of them, which it, which is advantageous for everyone.
Yep, that, that was very helpful and then so that the last follow-up is, what are those programs? It, like, can you tell us just what are those?
Right, they are working, so I have a clinical psychologist and we have teams.
Order, chair.
Uh, yes, Ms. Chambers?
Want to make sure we're sticking with the situation around the pandemic, the effect of the pandemic.
Okay, yes, let me, oh, thank you, Dr. Mrs. Chambers, I'll rephrase specifically. What programs are available to support the mental health of, of our students of color? Specifically, what programs are available to support the mental health of our students of color at this time during this pandemic?
They're not of color, they are for all children, all children, all children throughout the district.
Okay, that grant is covering all children, I misunderstood, there is a specific program to address the disproportionate identity, okay?
Correct.
Great, thank you, thank you, Ms. Chambers.
Thank you, um, I, uh, there's any more school committee members that have their hands raised? Cause we have a, a, a public member who has a question. Okay, um, Ms. Penhallow, you can have the floor.
All right, I want to just thank everybody for giving this report. That was awesome. And Megan, Lisa, and Lori, I work in the field. I totally understand. I really, really understand what you're going through. I get it. Um, I just want to ask if the schools are doing anything about their daily schedule. Um, we know that for mental health issues and stress and anxiety, getting outside, running, exercise is really helpful. I know that there's COVID restrictions, but there are really creative things that the elementary school can do. Teachers can do simple things. If you look at alternative education, like Waldorf Schools and Montessori Schools are doing a lot of stuff outside, letting kids have snack outside, eat outside, go for walks. As uh teachers or uh principals, have they allowed more of that happening? Cause it's something that doesn't cost any money that teachers can do. Any more outside?
I can speak for, for the elementary. I know at Richmond, um, in the spring and the fall and um. We were, they had outside, like tents, the PTO bought tents. They set outs- outside classrooms. Um, I have to give credit. I mean, they have recess. Um, but our PE teacher, because the gym, half of the gym has been used as a classroom for space. She, one of our gym teachers, she has been outside. Unless it's torrential downpour, she takes those kids outside on snow days. She had emailed the parents to let them know they need snow boots and they need snow pants. We had extra snow boots and snow pants at the school in case, because she took them outside. She took them outside. Today, when it was nice, I noticed kids outside again. Teachers took them outside for snack. So I think if the warmer weather comes for, for our building, I know we'll be taking kids more outside. For classrooms, for, you know, for air and all that stuff. During the cold time, we couldn't, but they went outside for gym. And went outside for recess as long as it wasn't torrential downpour.
Excellent. Thank you so much, right? I guess I'm asking if they're allowed, like, instead of the 20 minutes for lunch, like 10 minutes to eat, 10 minutes to play, has that been let up a little bit? So the kids can have more time outside.
Yeah, and we also have at Richmond, we also, we've been doing a lot of nature walks and breaks outside. We have the story path at Richmond, so the kids go out there. So we've been doing, trying to get them out as much as possible.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
Oh, Mr. Stahl, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, just wanted to chime in with the last comment that, uh, Jennifer, thank you so much for uh answering really tough questions and giving lots of insight and information. I really appreciate it. And all the, the counselors who uh spoke here tonight, uh, really appreciate your extra attention. And your extra work, and it also reminds me, listening to you, of um, how much extra the teachers are doing. And how much they're paying attention to this and really being aware of this. And I can uh attest to that, that my kids across the grade levels have experienced that. Teachers are really paying attention and really being attentive, as are the rest of you that presented here tonight. So uh, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Uh, you're welcome. Thank you. They're great. They're wonderful staff. I can't, I can't tell you enough.
Thank you so much for, for giving that, that information tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Um, okay, so um, we're on to uh letter F, which is the 2021 PE curriculum revisions. Um, Ms. Daly, are you having a presentation for us?
So every, um, all of our curriculum is on a five-year cycle for review. And this year, it's the physical education curriculum and the science curriculum. And so we did convene a team that started working at the beginning of the school year. And um, Susie Scannapieco is with us tonight. She is our STEM specialist for uh middle school and high school. And she's gonna do the presentation. And Susie, I don't know, do you prefer to show the slide deck or do you want me to, to filter through it?
Don't have, I can't.
Is it okay if you want me to go through it?
Just got unmuted. At first, it wouldn't allow me. I can, I can do it, no problem.
Okay, I will stop sharing and you share. Or do you want, yeah, right? Sorry, okay. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Susie Scannapieco. I'm the STEM specialist for um grades five through 12. Tonight, I will be presenting the physical education revisions for K to 12. Um, because it, it really is a complete document. I believe you had been shared the full document to review. I want to thank the writers um, who were involved at all the levels. Um, who, again, are experts in the field. I am by trade a math teacher, but I have been the STEM specialist quite a few years now. Um, and this is actually um, a group I've worked with in the past on the health curriculum as well. So it was really nice to work with them and be able to do this um, update. As usual, um, all new languages in yellow and all changes that um, we felt needed to be deleted or struck through. That is something that you guys I, I know are very used to. Um, I think we did a really nice job of updating the main goal. If you can see here, there is quite a bit of yellow. The idea here was to make it more comprehensive of the ideas that are so clearly already happening in our district. But we're definitely not represented by this paragraph. So um, it is the goal of the district that the students who graduate from Cherahoe Regional Schools are physically literate. By learning the skills and applying the concepts taught through the K-12 Physical Education Program. The graduate demonstrates responsible practices for themselves and others, respects each other, each peers diversity and unique strengths and weaknesses. And appreciates the benefits of regular physical activity. The main emphasis of physical education is to instill enjoyment of exercise, to value the benefits of human movement. And to follow the sound expert, um, exercise prac- principles, which encourage safe and effective lifelong fitness. So after hearing all the psychologists and doctors speak of the need for good physical well-being in order to even maintain mental health. This seemed um, only appropriate to be updated. Again, I, it was stuff that was already happening. I get to observe. PE classrooms five through 12, and I know it's no different at the elementary school. Um, and I'm seeing this stuff happen already. This was not necessarily new to the district. It was just new to this paragraph. Um, we also took a look at the curriculum through a cultural lens. As um, we know our district has done at this point after hearing tonight's meetings. Um, I just want to recognize that the overhaul of the PE curriculum, the last round, really took a lot of those things into account. So for example, there were very few gendered um state, or no gendered statements in the documents. That already had been considered on the last round. So really, the only place we felt that there could be an addition added was the idea that we do have. Um, dance involved in the standards, and we felt it could be a great place to encourage the cultures. And the interests of the schools um, to be reflected. I will take questions at the end. I can't see the whole audience right now, but I will make sure to take questions at the end. Um, I want to focus on a few parts of the curriculum that had the most changes. So I, in the elementary section of the update, you will see that grade. One was now combined with kindergarten instead of the grade two. And that was because the standards just aligned better. So you will notice that there are additions to the grade K charts and deletions from the grade two area. The next main change is at the middle school where you'll see that there were things that were already in the curriculum, in the activity charts. But were not clearly addressed in the year at a glance or vice versa. So we want really cleaned that up. And so I put one example here. If you can check in the unit two, quarters two and three, you will have seen that basketball already existed. Um, and when we talk about basketball, it's not necessarily two-sided competitive, you know, basketball games. But the skills that are involved in basketball, and so we felt that that was needed to be explained further. And there were these activity charts already in existence in the curriculum, but not for every single thing that was in. The instructional units. So we just made sure again that they all linked and they are clear. So that if somebody was looking at either one of the charts, they would be able to refer to the opposite, opposite one to get more clarity. Um, the basketball, like I said, is not necessarily, um, actually, it is not in the competitive world. It's really about the skills of the um game of basketball. And so if you look at that chart, which is now all yellow, it's all brand new. You will see clearer what they do during that basketball unit. Um, at the high school, the big change was that um, we wanted the curriculum to reflect what a typical 90-minute gym block is. Especially in the winter months when the students are not going outside. Um, because of lack of space or gymnasium is very small for the population that we have at high school. Would, there is actually three designated areas that are used every day. They are not used sometimes every day that a student has PE in their um, schedule. They are seeing all three of these rooms in order to create an equity amongst all the classes. So they do use the gym, they do use the fitness center, and they do use what we call a charger room. Um, which is where they do a lot of the flexibility and um, strength and endurance training. So all three of these spaces are being utilized daily and are um, the activities being done are being done daily. So we felt the need to really incorporate that into this document. And last, um, or maybe last, the next thing is the suggested resources. We really updated this. As you can see, it's mostly yellow. We made sure that the sites are active. We made sure that the um hyperlink is there, but also that the full URL is written. So that in case there was a broken link, that we could potentially find it by seeing the full um URL. And um, they were done from elementary through to high school. So there are things that all the levels could use. Or they are specific to um each level. And lastly, um, we did make sure that the glossary of terms was updated because there are quite a few terms. That are not necessarily known by all, and so we wanted to make sure that they were clear there. Not every single word in the entire document is um, in this glossary, but really things that we felt would not be of common knowledge. And that is all for the presentation. As far as the updates are concerned, as you know, the document is much longer. And you had a chance to review it prior to this meeting. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Ray, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, um, I read the whole uh. Document and um. I'd like some justification on uh, actually standard three, page 20. I notice you've uh struck out from kindergarten all the way to the fourth grade. Anything that revolves around uh. Health of uh difference between healthy and unhealthy foods. Hydration to dehydration. I mean, this, this makes no sense to me. These, these, this is where these kids should be learning this stuff. We have a health and safety, I mean, a health and wellness subcommittee, which is required to us by the state of Rhode Island. And, and our school committee chairperson has to serve on that committee. And you people have stricken everything that has to do with health and safety out of, out of these kindergarten to fourth grades. I, I want some justification on that.
Sure, I think I can answer that.
Um, yes.
PE teachers could um weigh in if, if they would um, are on the call. But um, we have two documents. Um, one is the health document. That is the health curriculum. It is also taught by the exact same teachers who teach the PE curriculum. And that is a different document that's already been approved by the school committee. It is not in the cycle to be revised at this time. We are, we are only doing the updates to the physical education.
So if I could.
Removing it from the health. There, there was nothing wrong with it being in, in this, in this phys ed thing to begin with.
Ms. Dan.
Um, I asked the same question, Bill. Um, cause when I, when I first saw those suggested revisions, I had the same concern. And um, you know, when speaking with the elementary phys ed teachers, again, the, what they said is that was repetitive. That it was already in the health curriculum and that it really didn't belong in the phys ed, because it wasn't taught in the phys ed class. It was taught when the teachers were teaching health. And so that's why they removed it from here, but it's in the health curriculum. And it just so happens the teachers teach both. So that's where I think, when it was originally done the first time, that's where there was some confusion. But then when they just revised the health curriculum last year, you know, they saw that distinction better. And they wanted to clarify that in this physical education curriculum. So it's not that it's not being done. Um, it's just that it's not being done in that physical education class. It's being done in the health class.
Mr. Day, go ahead, finish.
Oh, so you're telling me like in grade four, when you're talking about warming up and cooling down and cardiovascular fitness assessments. That it's not important to discuss the importance of hydration? When, when they're into these activities, you know, this repetitive stuff for these kids at that age. It, to me, is, is so very important. These are the age where we, we, we. Have repetitiveness, repetitiveness. You cannot say too much about having a kid get hydrated before, before they get dehydrated and stuff like that. I, I mean. I, I'm sorry, I, I, I guess I'm in the wrong, wrong, wrong business here, and I shouldn't, shouldn't even be on the school committee because.
I, I think.
Over there destroying this country.
I think if it's a recommendation the school committee wants for us to, you know, n- not strike out the items on page. 20 to 21 and standard three, then, then the school committee could certainly do that.
Mr. Day's gone. Um.
Could take that feedback and.
Ms., yeah, Ms. Daly, I probably um, didn't, I'm probably out of order. I'm calling myself out of order. We've probably, you probably should have made the recommendation for us to um, to accept or approve. And then we would have a motion and a second and then opportunity to discuss, and then we would vote on it. So I would, um, could you make that recommendation so we could continue with our discussion? And I apologize if I'm out of order. Are you making the recommendation that we approve this policy this evening? I mean, this new curriculum this evening?
I'm making the recommendation. Um, Jane, we're uh presenting, but I'm making the recommendation that the school committee approve the physical education curriculum as revised.
No more.
Okay, so we have Ms. Liz, Mr. Luzon and uh, and then Ms. Chambers second it. Okay. So now we can continue with our discussion. I apologize for that. I realized that we were moving forward. Um, Mr. Stahl, your hand is up. Uh, do you have some questions or comments?
Yeah, clarifying question. Um, I, I, I read through it. For the most part, it looked great. Um, didn't have any other real questions. I'm not so fit at phys ed expert either, so it looked good. Um, it makes sense to me. And I, I appreciated seeing some of the breakouts of activities like basketball, the skills things and all that sort of thing. Uh, I remember that from phys ed class, and that makes sense to me, teaching mechanicals and fundamentals. Also, I appreciated all that. One thing that I didn't see in detail, um, and, and if I missed it, just, just tell me where it is in the, the curriculum. Um, because it relates to our, our conversation we're gonna have in a few minutes later in the meeting. Um, but um, I know a, a regular activity in phys ed is yoga. And uh, in fact, my daughter today had yoga in phys ed. Um, and for, for some of us, uh, we regard yoga with uh Hindu and Buddhist origins as a religious practice. And therefore, we don't participate in that. So my nine-year-old daughter is, is doing school at home this week, just because she's a, a close contact. So she's quarantined. Um, so because she's at home, she just opted out and, and left the gym class and didn't participate in that last part. But where, where does yoga fit into this phys ed curriculum right now?
There are some page references. Like, I know Ms. Moffett's on, so she probably knows it way better than I know, but I know um, some of the references.
You want Ms. Moffett to answer that?
I can, it's okay if we let her go first and then.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, Ms. Moffett, you have the floor. Thank you. Ms., uh, unmute yourself, please.
Yep, uh, so I, I think at, and um, I would have to go back and then check everything. I think we were very careful not to, to do yoga and call it yoga. So if that is happening. Um, we dealt, dealt with it much more of a strength and stretch kind of thing. Where we're teaching the techniques for, for optimal stretching. Um, some is used for relaxation, but there is no specific yoga in the, in the document.
So there actually is, so on page, for example, 39 and final 40, they, they are called, called out to yoga, not sure. And tho- those are more, um, I think kind of high school. But I want to make sure there are places where the word yoga, page 37, around the flexibility pieces, so um. It's about posture and proper, more about the stretching piece. I, I'm not sure if that's. it's about posture and property, more about the stretching piece. I'm not sure if that's what, what the concern is, but it's definitely around the flexibility, fitness. On page thirty-seven, thirty-nine, forty, three examples where yoga is called.
And that can be easily removed if that, because we were, we were trying to be conscious of the controversy of putting it in because we know that, that is it is a religious piece and there has to be this, the separation. So we were, I, I I thought we were being conscious to try to make sure that it was, the focus was on strengthening and stretching and, and not on the yoga piece. So if that is still in there, we can, we can go back in and find the spots where it is.
The section, can I speak?
Yes, good, Ms. Daly.
The section that Superintendent Picard's talking about is, as she said, the high school and it's under flexibility and fitness. And it's actually has been in there the last five years. It's, it's not new language, but again, if that's something you want us to go back and look at, we can certainly do that. But it's, it's in the high school specifically, and it is under flexibility and fitness. And it's not new proposed language.
I know Mr. Anderson wants to speak, but I do have some school committee members. But Mr. Anderson, I'll give you the floor and then I'll go through the school committee members.
Sure. Ms. Moffett, I'd like some clarification. Are we teaching religious material in your phys ed classes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have clarified that. The discussion of yoga is, I believe, the next item on the agenda.
Well, mindfulness.
Mind.
Mindfulness and yoga. I would suggest respectfully to the school committee that we defer that conversation to that point where we can have a full conversation in terms of the issues that have been raised and we can put some context into the situation.
Okay, Mr. Legori, you had your hand up first and then I'll go through with the other school committee.
My comments. So I feel like I have a little bit of expertise in the area of fitness and flexibility and issues related to that. And I think I, I really appreciate what Ms. Moffett's trying to do for the students. I think there is maybe a gray area. And I'm, I'm certainly in no position to tell people how they should interpret things. But flexibility and strengthening that Ms. Moffett described, you, I'm going to assume many people on this call tonight have been to a physical therapist and they've made you do things or asked you to do things to strengthen and rehab an injury that are virtually identical to a movement in yoga or some other type of spiritual type activity. So there, there exists this gray area around all of that. And to do a certain stretch or to do a core strengthening exercise certainly could look and be the same as a yoga movement. There's no doubt about it. I'm not denying that at all. That doesn't mean it's a yoga movement. It doesn't mean it's a spiritual movement. It doesn't mean it's a religious movement. I happen to author a number of books related to health and fitness and all of those are in there. And none of them have anything equated to yoga in there. It's about strengthening. It's about wellness. It's about health, et cetera. So I, I, I'm not arguing for either side. What I'm just trying to ask people to understand is there is a large gray area there. And maybe the school can consider exceptions if students don't want to participate. But I would hate to see the school not be able to encourage their students to engage in exercises that are really helpful and healthy. I mean, many of you have talked about mental wellness. I'm completely on board with that. If we're not letting our kids do things that are good for them because of the gray area, I'm not saying because of the religious beliefs or the spiritual beliefs, but it's simply a gray area. And maybe we need to be sensitive to the individual needs and accommodate that. But I don't think we should proverbially throw the baby out with bath wash.
Catherine, you have the floor, then Donna.
Wonder if we could accomplish some, some unity by striking the word yoga where it appears. So I'd like to make a motion to strike the word yoga from where it is used in the curriculum.
Yeah, we have a motion to accept the policy first. So.
So I make a motion to amend the policy. Isn't that how it goes?
You can amend it.
So I make the motion to amend the policy to strike the word yoga where it is used in the curriculum.
Do I have a second on that? Mr. Callahan, second that. Okay. We are open for discussion on that amendment, the change in the amendment. Mr., do you have anything else Catherine you'd like to say?
No, I think I, I am respectful to people's ideology and I think we do want to keep things separate. And I do think we want to let children move. So if we can take that uncomfortable language out, then perhaps we can take the uncomfortable piece away.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chambers, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I I'm a little concerned that we're getting bogged down with semantics on this. I, I don't have a problem with using yoga in terms of exercise. It does not relate to a religion to me, but as John said, we are going to discuss this on the next agenda item. So at this point, I would like to congratulate and sue the committee and Suzie and your team. You always do a magnificent job on our curriculum and update us. And thank you very much for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Mr. Abbott, then Mr. Stahl and then Mr. Luzon. Mr. Abbott, you have the floor. George?
I, I took the liberty of looking up yoga through Bing and it starts off by saying it's a Hindu spiritual and ascetic discipline, a part of which, including breath control, simple meditation and adoption of specific bodily postures in which is, that is widely practiced for health and relaxation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abbott. Do you agree that, okay, thank you for that comment. That's interesting information. Mr. Stahl and then Mr. Luzon. Thank you. Mr. Stahl, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I like the, I like the direction of the conversation. I appreciate the willingness to have the conversation. And again, I'm not trying to change anyone else to my ideals or conform anyone else to my ideals either. I realize I'm, I'm a little bit of an outlier here, but I appreciate the conversation and I agree actually with everything that Gary said on this matter. And I, I agree that, that fitness and exercise and core and strength training are all very important. And I agree that a lot of the movements even will look very similar and stretches will look very similar. And I do not have a problem with them being used. So one more, and Donna Chambers, I know it sounds like we're splitting hairs and getting bogged down in details, but, but, but it is important to me that we get some of these details right. And it's the difference between it being a conflict for me and not. So in addition to striking the word yoga, which I think is important, that we don't use that term in practice or in the curriculum. Because some, because again, we're, we're not asking adults to decipher all this. We're asking kids to decipher all this. And this is beyond their pay grade. Okay. My nine-year-old shouldn't have to be stressing about that. So we, we get rid of the term yoga in practice and in the curriculum. It's also important to me that if we use the techniques or stretches that we don't use names that have religious orientation. So there's a, there's a Sanskrit language and there is, there are names of the yoga poses named after gods or heroes of the faith in Hinduism, Buddhism, et cetera. And again, I respect anyone else's desire to practice those things, but I'd rather not have the language there that goes with that. Because that's what gives it the religious connotation. So if we could strike the word yoga from the curriculum and practice and take names away and keep doing core exercising and strength training that Gary is, is really good about. And I should be better about Gary, then I think that that's the right direction to go and I'm happy with that.
Thank you. Mr. Luzon, then Mr. Legori, then Mr. Abbott. Mr. Luzon, you have the floor.
I, I appreciate the endeavor, Catherine. I really do. But I, I don't think deleting the word yoga is going to change the political argument. Just like no different than we, we made the twenty-fifth of December now a, just a holiday versus calling it Christmas, but we know we're going to have Christmas off. So I just got a feeling this, this argument is not going to go away by just taking the word away. So I'm, I'm, let's just get this thing over with. Thank you.
Mr. Legori, your turn. You have the floor.
David, I completely a hundred percent agree with everything you just said. Craig, I respectfully disagree. I, I think these are not yoga movements. In my mind, in my view, as someone who is considered an ex, a global expert in the world of fitness, I don't see these as yoga movements at all. And I agree with David's approach. If we don't approach them as, as spiritual or yoga. But I do want to make one other broad comment. And Donna, I mean this with the ultimate respect because I, I very much enjoy your comments on this committee and being a committee member with you. And I, I probably agree with you that yoga to me is not at all an offensive word or even a religious word. But, you know, I think it's just important for all of us, everyone on this call, everyone in our community to remember that we may feel a certain ways about some things, but other people might feel differently about it. And, and I think that's maybe David's point here is we just got to respect how everybody else feels. And you know, I'm with you, Donna. I don't think yoga is that big of a deal. I get, George, I saw the same reference you did and I agree with that. I would argue that those same skills you read, George, are imperative in competitive Olympic diving, in gymnastics, you know, posture, core, all those things. But that you described, if you just remove the word Hindu at the beginning of the description, that's exactly what a Olympic class diver has to do and be and all. So let's remove, remove the language that some people might be uncomfortable with, but let's keep the essence of what we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legori. Mr. Abbott, then Donna, Ms. Chambers. Mr. Abbott, you have the floor.
Well, Dave, would you object to incorporating Norse and Greek mythology into coursework at Charahoe?
No, that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, George, that's actually, we're talking about the PE curriculum right now.
But we're talking about religious aspects.
Yeah, but that's, that's, but I think we need to stick with in relative, relative to the PE curriculum. But thank you, Mr. Abbott. Ms. Chambers?
Yeah, I would, thank you, Gary, for those comments. I would like to move on and take John's recommendation that this will be discussed at the next meeting. But I also want to remind everyone that David Stahl, committee member Stahl, has made it very clear that we want to be inclusive. And if the word yoga includes people that may be practicing Hinduism or may not, and every student has a right to opt out, why are we going on and on about a word in our curriculum that is a religious connotation to him? Okay. So I would like to move on and take a vote and discuss it further at the next agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. Just to clarify, the vote right now is Catherine's recommendation or that she, that we, we accept the policy as written, just remove the word yoga. And we've, we've gotten a first and a second on that. So I have one more comment from the public and I would like to move this to a vote. Phyllis Penhow, Penhow, you have your hand up.
I, I know that David Stahl right here seems like it's only one person speaking, but there are many, many families in Charahoe that feel like he does. And I, I think that you have to listen to what he's telling you. I don't know why they don't come out. I don't know why they represent it. But he does represent many people. And I appreciate Gary's very logical way that he explained this. And I believe I've seen children doing yoga with praying hands, looking up to the sun, sun salutation. It's so much more than just the exercise. It's the spiritual names. And Donna, I see you shaking your head and you don't agree. That's okay. You're entitled to your opinion. But for some people, it, it has a background in a religion. So just simply take out the word and the spiritual connotation. There's more people that, that from Charahoe I, that feel like this, just because they're not here today. Thank you.
Yeah, we can also come back with a revision based on the feedback. That's easier.
No. No, I don't. I, I was just getting, you know, Ms. Picard, I was just looking, Suzie keeps shaking her head. So I was just going to have Suzie just answer my question that it, it would be okay and appropriate if we accepted the policy, the, I'm sorry, the new curriculum as is with the word yoga's, yoga removed from those, those pages.
I really believe that the department heads at the, the middle school, high school and the representatives from the elementary school would be very fine with that. It was actually not new language. So I think it actually didn't come up in a ton of our conversations because it wasn't new. It wasn't an addition to. It was something that had already been there. But I don't think that they'd have any opposition.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So I guess, Ms. Picard, we probably, if you're okay with that, we don't need to, okay. So there has been a motion and a second to accept the, the curriculum, the new PE curriculum and thank you.
Excuse me, Linda. You have to vote, you have to vote on the amendment separate from the motion. So the amendment goes first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Donna. So I, okay, I thought we did, but we can take, okay, so we'll, we'll take a vote on the amendment that Catherine recommended that we would accept the curriculum as is with the words yoga removed from it. Those, like, is there any more discussion on it?
Excuse me, she's not, she's not saying accept it as is. She just wants to remove the word yoga. The other motion is to accept it. So the amendment is to remove the word yoga.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Donna. Thank you very much. So the amendment is to remove the word yoga from the PE curriculum. Those in favor? So we're removing the word yoga. We have, okay, those opposed? We have Donna and George Abbott opposing that. Donna. Okay, and anyone abstaining? Lisa McCaruso and Craig Luzon. Oh, Craig, you're abstaining. Thank you. I see you waving. And anyone recusing? Okay, so I believe the majority has. Yes, okay. So there was a majority vote to remove the word yoga. That's the amendment. Now we need to go back and accept the curriculum. Okay, so there was a motion and a, and a second on that. So now we are taking a vote to accept the PE curriculum as amended. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, so those in favor accepting the PE curriculum as amended? Okay, so we have, okay, any opposed? Mr. Day, Mr. Abbott is opposing. Anybody abstaining? Recusal. Okay, so we had two opposed, Donna, Mr. Day and Mr. Abbott, and the rest were in favor. That was a very interesting conversation. Thank you very much. And thank you for all the work that the curriculum committee has, has done. It's a lot of work. Okay, so we're moving on to letter G.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry. Who said madam chair?
I did.
Okay, are we getting close to ten?
Well, it's twelve minutes of ten and we're just moving on to F on business. So, no, excuse me, G. The motion to extend the, to waive the ten o'clock policy?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Luzon made a motion to sec, to waive the ten o'clock end time and Catherine seconded it? Any discussion on that? I don't think so. Those in favor? I don't think we have a choice. Looks like everyone's accepting that as a, they're all in favor. There's, I don't think there's any opposed, right? I don't, no. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Luzon. Now we're on to G, mindfulness and how it relates to the curriculum. Mr. Stahl, you asked that this be put on the agenda as part of our future agenda items. So I would, I guess, give you the floor to start, but I believe we have a presentation from Mr. Day, or Ms. Daly and John Anderson at some point. Mr. Stahl?
Right. I don't, I don't have much to say other than I asked for, this was about eight months ago, I asked for a legal opinion on teaching Buddhists, Buddhism or Buddhist practices in the curriculum or instruction in the school. And that includes the mindfulness meditation pieces, the yoga pieces, the mindfulness center at the middle school, all of those pieces being in instruction and curriculum and the legality of that in terms of incorporating one or two particular religions into instruction. Not in, not in regards to history or understanding or a sociological course, but actual practice. And so that's, I just want to make, make it clear to everyone that that's the distinction. Before, before George asked the question, do I think we should study Greek mythology or other world religions? Of course, you can study all the world religions. But practice in the instructional time is very different. So I'm interested in the legal opinion. And so John, I'm sure is prepared to give that to us. I'll just sit back and listen.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Mr. Anderson and Ms. Daly, I think you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Um, I have some slides and so perhaps, I guess Jane, you're controlling the slides if we can start. So, uh, the issue that has been addressed, asked to, uh, that Jane and I address is mindfulness in the Charahoe curriculum. I want to begin by putting some context with regard to the issue of mindfulness. So if we can go to the next slide. Jane, what, um, why don't you explain? Let's go back.
Let me try that again.
Thank you.
Which slide do you want me to be on, Mr.?
Why don't we start with Merry Christmas?
Okay. There you go.
Okay. Then let me start with the, the one Merry Christmas. In the last few years, we probably all read in the newspaper, a lot of people running around and acting very silly, saying that Merry Christmas offends them. Merry Christmas is imposing Christianity. Many Merry Christmas makes them uncomfortable. And we've had an equal number of silly people running around saying, oh, I, I, I won't say Merry Christmas. I'll have a holiday tree. You know, I, I won't, um, I wouldn't want to offend anybody. The legal standard here is an objective standard, and that is a common sense. What is reasonable under the circumstances? And I would think that saying Merry Christmas to somebody is a perfectly reasonable thing for anybody to do. Let's go to the next slide. Now, we also have had a lot of, uh, talk about the fact that, um, and it was frankly, and I wish that the topics had been reordered tonight about how, um, mindfulness promotes Buddhism. Let me talk about theft. Theft has Judeo-Christian origins. It's in the Bible. It's in the Bible that thou shall not steal. It's in the New, in the Old Testament, in the New Testament. By the same standard of somebody who says that religion informs Buddhism, the same standard can be applied to a simple rule with regard to theft. And again, the question becomes how you do it. So let's go to the next slide. This is from the Charahoe Discipline Code. And the Charahoe Discipline Code clearly makes it clear, and this is a code that you all have voted on, that theft is prohibited. And it is indisputable that the origins of this provision that you all voted on, that you included in your discipline code, comes from a Judeo-Christian background. But just like somebody would be silly to say, oh, Merry Christmas offends me because it's imposing Christianity, it would be equally silly for somebody to say, oh, we shouldn't have a policy with regard to theft because we're imposing a religious value. So let's go to the next slide. So let's talk about, and again, this is why I wish that the order had been done. Courts have looked at the issues of mindfulness and yoga, and it depends on how it is done. In 2015, the California Court of Appeals looked at a phys ed class where yoga was being taught. And I don't think that anyone would describe California, um, you know, as a, a bastion of conservatism. And the California Supreme Court said that yoga as a phys ed class, even if the class was funded by a religious organization, even assuming that it has a religious basis, which has been pointed out multiple times during this evening, even if the classes might make somebody interested in becoming a Hindu later in their life, and even the, assuming that the poses and lessons about positive character traits come from yoga. The court said that yoga was not the establishment of religion in schools. Why? Because the court looked at the details at what was being offered. And the class did not talk about ultimate concerns such as what the meaning of life and death. The foundation funded the classes but did not develop the curriculum. And the foundation certified the teachers solely in terms of proficiency in teaching the yoga poses. So the law in California is pretty clear that you can teach yoga provided that you're not talking about ultimate life and death, issues like life and death, that you control the curriculum. And that certification again focuses on the, uh, on the poses as opposed to, um, teaching, uh, particular religious concepts. Mindfulness is no different. Mindfulness is a practice, but it is not necessarily a religion. There are people who practice mindfulness who are atheists. There are people who practice mindfulness who are Jewish. There are people who practice mindfulness who are Southern Baptists. Again, the question becomes how you do it. I have discussed the matter at length with Ms. Daly. I've discussed it with the superintendent. Ms. Daly is going to now talk about how it is done in Charahoe. And I don't see that it is any more religious than frankly saying to somebody Merry Christmas or to have a policy that you voted on that said, we won't, um, uh, you know, that, that theft, that students will be punished for engaging in theft. To say that religious values, whether they're Judeo-Christian, Buddhist, whatever, don't inform what we do on an everyday basis is, it's, is hollow. They do inform what we do. But the question is, do we try to impose it on other people? And I will express my concern that tonight we are imposing values on other people. Mr. Stahl asked about lawsuits. There is a lawsuit that has been pending in Georgia by a teacher who was disciplined for teaching yoga. And her lawsuit is based on the fact that people are trying to use the schools to impose their values. I think we would all be in a better situation if we had a much more tolerant situ, uh, community that respected other people's values as opposed to engage, engaging in self censorship by taking words out of the curriculum. At this point, I'll let Jane pick up in terms of what the curriculum actually says.
So my task is my, as I understood it was, where is mindfulness that term used in our curriculum? And so the only places where I could find that would be looking through the comprehensive school counseling program, where I did not see the term mindfulness and I did a search and I read through it. And also the health curriculum. Um, and in, the only place I saw in the health curriculum was, um, on page 48. And it was in reference to standard three for a high school course, contemporary health issues two. And I have a screenshot of that standard here and you can see that it's in related to, relation to zones of regulation. And zones of regulation is our, is our tier one approach to teaching for all students, our social emotional learn concepts. And we start that in the very early grades in the elementary level. And that again, is all throughout our health curriculum. But this was the only place in the curriculum where it specifically had the words mindfulness. So then I wanted to dig into that a little bit more. So I looked at our social emotional learning, um, tiers and our document that we use to share with teachers so they can know what it is they're supposed to provide in terms of tier one, tier two, or tier three learning for students, um, in relation to SEL. And I found this description of the zones of regulation. And you know, it, it, there's really nothing in here specific to mindfulness except that, um, when I went to this poster that the high school created, and this was a charge that we did a few years ago and we implemented our new SEL. We had at each level had them define, well, what is zones of regulation? What does that look like at the middle school and at the high school level? So they created this poster to show what, um, the zones look like at each level. And under the red zone, which as you can tell would be the one where the student is the most, um, or the least self-regulated. They had as a strategy, practice mindfulness of your surroundings, take a few minutes and tune into everything that you hear, smell, see, taste and feel around you. So, um, I then consulted with Dr. Lori Odison Parodi, who I believe is still on the call. So I appreciate that. Dr. Parodi and just asked her, could you give an example of how that is used in the, in the high school in terms of a technique they might use for practicing mindfulness to help students self-regulate? So Lori, did you want to just talk to this slide?
Sure, sure. So this is a typical coping strategy we've give, give to kids so that they can practice some regulation strategies within the classroom. You know, there's a lot of coping skills we give to, to students and strategies that they, they want to use, but they can't use in the classroom. So this allows them to, to practice a coping strategy that allows them to continue to access learning within the classroom. So, um, basically it's pretty simple and straightforward, but it really focuses in on you grounding yourself in the present moment by using your various senses. So your sense of smell, your sense of sight, um, hearing and so forth. And we've gotten a lot of success from this technique. A lot of students report, um, that it is, it does work for them. Um, and again, it allows them to stay in the classroom without having to leave to take a break. So they continue to access, um, learning in the classroom. So you can see what are five things you can, you can see. So we ask them to look around the room and really be mindful of things that you maybe you haven't noticed before. Um, and by doing this, it kind of stops that anxiety cycle and allows them to focus on the present moment so that they can again focus on what the teacher's saying and hopefully stay within the classroom setting.
I, I would simply add at this point that what is described on the slide that is in front of you is mindfulness.
And then the last thing I was asked by, um, Superintendent and, um, Mr. Anderson that I just, um, go back to the Middle School Mindfulness Center Champlin Grant, I believe that was also brought up and this item was requested for a future school committee meeting. And we did not receive that grant. So that was a grant that was brought to the school committee, um, last year. I think it was May, I have May 26, 2020. Um, and it was approved by the school committee. So we did submit it, but unfortunately we did not receive that grant. And the only other thing, John, I don't know if you want to talk about the first slide or are we all set?
Uh, I mean, at this point, I'm, I'm all set.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Daly for that presentation. Um, Mr. Stahl has his hand raised. Do you have a comment or question at this point, Mr. Stahl?
I sure do. But John, would you mind removing your share screen so we can see each other?
That's me.
I'm not controlling the screen.
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you so much. So, um, a few things. One, um, I really like respectful conversations and I like respectful conversations even about difficult things like this. And, uh, I hope that I can receive the same kind of respect, um, that I am, uh, doing my best to demonstrate to everyone here. And that includes from our attorney. I, you know, when I ask for a legal opinion, I'm not really asking for our attorney to tell me what he thinks is silly or reasonable. I'm really asking for a legal opinion. And when I ask about the court cases, I'm not asking him to bring a court case that leans in the direction that he favors. I'm asking him to look at all the court cases. I asked specifically about Cape Cod and Massachusetts, where there are many school districts who have, um, sued and some successfully nearby in Massachusetts to eliminate mindfulness from their curriculums because it was deemed to be a violation of the Establishment Clause. Those are the things that I would like when I ask for a legal opinion to be actually looked at and actually talked about and presented here. So that we have an objective viewpoint. The other thing is, uh, you know, the conversation of comparing this or bringing this in, Mr. Anderson was quite dismissive when I brought this up the first time and he, before even, even investigating the legal opinion at the meeting where I asked for it. He said, well, what about the 10 commandments? That informs our, our handbook and code of conduct. And you've mentioned theft as the example. And, uh, as far as I know, in every municipality in the country, theft is an actual crime. It's actually illegal. So in the school, we would tend to discipline kids for doing things that are illegal. So I don't think that that's even a reasonable conversation. And I'm, it doesn't give me a great deal of confidence in our legal counsel when I'm asking for a legal opinion. And that's the kind of opinion that I get. I understand in here, Jane, what you said about where this appears in our curriculum. I understand what you've said about the mindfulness center, that we did not get the grant for the mindfulness center. And Mr. Zenian confirmed that for me, but he also confirmed for me that they're still planning to open the mindfulness center next year when COVID allows. So grant aside, it's intended to be done. And without a grant, that means it's intended to be done with budget money, with taxpayer dollars. And I have a problem with that even more than I have a problem with it being done with a grant. So it's still very much a conversation, still very much on the table. It's just that the grant was not awarded. The other places, I have four that I've experienced in the school, the elementary grades, elementary grades during classroom time, doing Zen Den, children's yoga, the children's mindfulness meditation through Zen Den in the elementary grades, my students this year. So you can tell me it's not in the curriculum, but it's here in practice and that needs to get fixed if it doesn't belong in the curriculum. The second place is in the last month in a middle school classroom in advisory time led by a guidance counselor, mindfulness meditation practices. If that's not in the curriculum, then it shouldn't be happening there. All grades in health classes, it's mentioned that it is incorporated. And I can tell you, because I have kids in five different grades in two different schools in Charahoe right now, that it's happening this year. So the elementary grades, the middle school advisory time with guidance counselors, all grade health classes and the middle school mindfulness center are all current places of meditation practice. So if our curriculum says one thing and our practice says something else, that's an even larger problem and concern. And I waited eight months for a legal opinion and I specifically asked for our attorney to look into the court cases where people have sued successfully in less than a hundred miles from here. And I got a biased, disrespectful opinion calling this conversation silly and they didn't even examine those court cases. It's unacceptable.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to respond to that.
Yes, Mr.
First of all, Mr. Stahl, in terms of lack of respect, you can look in the mirror. Second of all, with regard to the research that was done, no. You are interrupting me, sir.
Yes, I am, because I'm on the school committee and you're. Yes, I am because I'm on the school committee and you're. Point of order, Chairperson.
I.
We're not going to have our council. Uh, calling names to the.
Mr. Stahl, I actually think that at this point, both of you are a little bit out of order. You were you were very um. Yes, I I think we don't need to get to this point. I know, Mr. Anderson, you want to be able to.
One of us is elected and one of us is hired.
Mr. Stahl, you're entitled to put it on the next agenda to fire me if you so wish.
Okay, let's, this is not productive.
I I I I agree with you, but my professionalism has been attacked.
I know.
And I and I resent it. And I was about to say that I did a nationwide search on a database of reported decisions. Called Lexis. And I reported to you what Lexis yielded. In addition to that, I also did had done for me a suit search of newspaper articles. So if you're aware of published decisions from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or anywhere else, I will be happy to look at them. But they are not available to attorneys generally. Number, number one. Number two is that. With regard to this issue and with regard to any issue. My role as counsel for the school committee is to give the school committee my best advice possible. I appreciate that you don't like my advice on most occasions. That's your prerogative. And if you wish to find other counsel, please go ahead and do so. I do want to take umbrage though with your complaint that you've been waiting eight months. I've been ready since last June to discuss this issue. And I've been ready since last June to discuss the issue on the next agenda. I resent the fact that if this was so important to you, that you did not speak to two different chairs of the school committee. And say, where's my issue? Because I have been ready. And indeed, the only thing that prompted this conversation was. I reminded the chair of the school committee that it had not been resolved. So for you to say that I haven't responded in eight months, sir, is a cheap shot.
I'll clarify to say I didn't get a response for eight months.
Um, point of order, move on, please.
Yes, we need to move on. Um, Mr. Grant, do you have anything specific to this mindfulness conversation and we need to?
I I believe that uh with all the heat in the air, um, I just want to. Give thanks for everybody being opening to open to having these discussions. I do appreciate the areas of productive discussion. Um, and I will leave it at that. I'm really glad we're having these conversations and um, thanks for all you guys. I'll do.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Um, Ms. Algier, we lost you the last time. You got you came back. Do you have a comment with regards to um? This this uh conversation we're having?
Yes, um, so I didn't introduce myself the last time. I'm my name is Cassie Algier. Um, I am a mom of three girls. Um. My oldest is in the seventh grade. My youngest, I'm homeschooling this year because distance learning was not going to be an option for us. I'm an ER nurse, so. I don't have eight hours to stand with her and she's in first grade. Um, and my youngest is not in school yet. So my middle one did kindergarten last year. So in kindergarten last year, in regards to this mindfulness movement. Let me start off by saying the self-regulation things with teaching the kids the five things that you can see, touch, feel. Those are great for. Bringing that back in. That kind of thing I am enthused about because that's the kind of stuff, you know, I use at work when I have people coming in with panic attacks, when I have people coming in. With all sorts of anxiety issues, medical issues that they need to focus on certain things. Um. And then if I continue on. When we're talking about this whole new mindfulness thing, I don't know if maybe some of the teachers have taken this, oh, mindfulness, let's also do meditation. When we switched to um distance learning last year, um, so my youngest or my middle one was in kindergarten. There were times during her kindergarten day that they did meditation. They did guided meditation and it was literally walked through. They were supposed to sit with their eyes closed and. I was front and center listening to this guided meditation. My seventh grader came out of her room the other day and told me, oh, we're doing guided meditation in uh, it was one of her classes. I don't know if it was um. I don't know if it was advisory. I don't know which one it was, but she said that they were doing guided meditation. It's not something either of my kids like, and it's not something that I promote with. My beliefs either. Um. I do have to say that I agree with Dave where it is bringing in Buddhist beliefs. Um. And is bringing in practices of other religious beliefs. As far as the presentation that we just got, um, being this is my first. Me meeting that I've actually been able to attend. This is much later than I usually stay up, um, unless I'm working. So. As far as this presentation went, I have to say it was. I don't know. It it didn't seem very thought out or very tactful. Um, to start with theft is being pulled straight from the Bible. If you look up. Which I did. Let me see if I actually still have it up. If you look up um Buddhism and their perception on theft is translated into do not steal. So and that's just a quick Google search. So it's not just in Christianity that you find theft is bad. Um, which is kind of what this quick little blurb about why it's okay to then present something that is Buddhist. In a secular environment. Right? Because schools are supposed to just teach our children. They're supposed to learn reading, writing, math, arithmetic. Yes, they need to learn to be good humans. They need to learn to be kind to one another. They need to learn how to control themselves and right now is a really difficult time. Because like I said, ER nurse, so I'm front and center to all of that. I'm front and center to people. Harming themselves because of their medical, because of their mental illnesses. I'm front and center to the virus and the pandemic that is going on. I'm front and center to. Schooling my child and helping my oldest when she is freaking out because she thinks that if she shuts off during the mindfulness advisory or whatever. That she's going to get not have that she's not going to have credit for the class and she's a very, very good student. Um, and makes herself that way. She's very proactive with it. Um. So I think that that presentation was. It it honestly was not very thought out as far as how it was going to come across to everyone who might be here. Um. As far as saying that mindfulness is is no different than yoga, well, we just discussed that yoga should be striked from. The uh PE curriculum, the word yoga and the names of those moves because they. Entail these um or in. They bring up different thoughts of, okay, this different religion. So even though there's only a few points where the curriculum is actually talking about mindfulness. Um. The teachers are doing something different. So I don't know if that's something that the committee can then say, okay, well, we need to really look at what our teachers are doing and say, this isn't what we mean by mindfulness. And I honestly would really love to hear like more details about what this mindfulness center is supposed to be because if it's just something that where they go in and they learn more about. These different religions, then they shouldn't. It shouldn't be part of school, you know, it it's not, there's supposed to be that separation of religion versus um. State and school.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Algier. Um, Catherine Juisty and then Ryan Callahan.
And we just offer that. Most students start the day with the Pledge of Allegiance. And the Pledge of Allegiance says, one nation under God. And we give students the option to not say the Pledge of Allegiance. If they are not comfortable with pledging allegiance under God. I would say if there's something similar to that here, if your child is being exposed to something that you feel very uncomfortable with. Then they should also have the opportunity to say, I'm not going to participate in mindfulness because I don't like what it stands for. That's a difficult conversation for you to have with your child, certainly, but it's a difficult conversation to allow your child to not stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It may not seem the same to some of you. I can see by some of the smirks on the screen that maybe it doesn't equate the same to you. Um, but I will just say that. It equates the same to me. Um. So I would just offer that if there is a vast discomfort with mindfulness. Then you do have the option to have your child not participate. Thank you.
Mr. Callahan and then Mr. Day and then Mr. Stahl. Mr. Callahan, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I appreciate the uh, the presentation, um, the walkthrough in terms of how mindfulness is actually. Um, describe the steps of it and so on. I I don't see anything supernatural in there. Um, it's, I didn't see any content or context in there that was asking uh children to. I don't know. In any way try to tap into an energy source or reference a higher power. I mean, these are things that basically came down to close your eyes and listen and those types of things. So I I'm struggling a little bit with. The connection here and what I saw presented as, you know. Religious in any way, shape or form. There was, there was nothing about it. That that I could easily, you know. Uh, link in there. So to to Ms. Algier's point, if there's a practice being done by, you know, teachers or something that. Is beyond scope and it's introducing. You know, whatever, some sort of supernatural uh context, then yeah, okay, well, then that should be addressed, but. Uh, but I didn't see anything in the presentation tonight about that. It just seemed as if it's a a coping mechanism and according to an expert, um, a very uh well uh used one, so. Yeah, I I'm struggling to find the objection to mindfulness at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Day and then Mr. Stahl. Mr. Day, you have the floor.
I guess, Madam Chair, are you uh? Started off at the uh seven o'clock hour here, asking us to be uh.
I know.
Uh, a little brief on on our thing. I think we've gotten way out of that.
Yes, we have. Yes, sir. I'm trying.
We've still got, we're going to be here at eleven o'clock at least. I don't have anything else to do tomorrow, so it's not a problem with me, but I do want to say one thing, uh. I've known Mr. Anderson for a number, number of years and and I think he's one of the most professional lawyers that that we've ever had in this district and uh I support uh. His uh, his diligence to do the best that he can for the citizens of Charahoe and the and the members of the school committee. So I I I usually agree with Dave on a lot of things, but I. I think Dave was way off base when he attacked Mr. Anderson the way he did because John has not been nothing but a gentleman to every member of the school committee in the past and uh. I I apologize uh if if he takes any offense to that any of the myself. Uh, agreed with uh Dave's uh analogy of what uh Ms. Anderson reported.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Mr. Stahl, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Um. Another point that that Mr. Anderson raised was policies that we have voted on. Um, regardless of my personal opinions, we had a lengthy discussion last summer with the policy about the school calendar. And that was mentioned, that was actually an illustration in Mr. Anderson's presentation about Merry Christmas and and other people. Of the holidays. And so I voted for that policy, even though I didn't agree with renaming the holidays, but I voted in line with that policy.
Stahl, is this how, does this connected with what we're talking about with the mindfulness?
Uh, yes, I was just uh responding to Mr. Anderson's policies that we have approved previously and how they affect the council. So so I just wanted to mention. I also wanted to mention uh. To to Catherine's point, which was a really good point, Catherine, and I understand it. Um, and you know, that that people can opt out of things and you can opt out of the under God. And that's that's saying two words is a pledge of allegiance and it is pretty easy to opt out of. Um, a practice of a religion, a practice of religious exercises is very different than reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, and Catherine, your your idea of having the kids opt out. Well, I appreciate that and I understand that and 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 I can I can do the the hard work as a parent of trying to help my kids opt out. But you can't expect five-year-olds in kindergarten to have this level of discernment and this level of assertiveness and know what they should opt out of or opt into or to. To deal with the confusion or or the 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 issues that that's that's creating for them internally. Um, you can't ask them to do that. And and lastly, Ryan also really good points. If there's nothing supernatural, if there's no tapping into a higher power, is this a spiritual exercise? Not all, I would agree with you that a lot of religions that that I would deem false religions have no no great spiritual connection or power or or really a higher authority. I would agree with that. Doesn't make them not religions. Their systems of morality and religious worldview and the mindfulness that's being taught in our curriculums teaches kids to have a. A a different lens and discernment filter to not judge the thoughts that are coming through their mind. To be present with the thoughts, but not pass judgment on them. They're literally learning a discernment process for morality. That's the way that religion works. And and again, it's just not my religion, but but I understand it's fine. But that, but you're 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 saying that I don't hear the name or identifying of a higher power makes it not a religion. Um, is is not a good argument. It 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 there's, it's a religion. It's a, it's a worldview and a and a moral system.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl. Uh, Ms. Durkin, you have the floor. Oh, mute. I'm mute. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just saying, I'm sorry. I just want, you know, to understand, this is really, I mean, our biggest struggle. With these children and young adults right now is to help them self-regulate. And it, this is is what is, you know, these simple techniques is what is helping them doing. It has nothing to do with religion. It's all about how to calm themselves and really understand where their body and mind is and help them be more productive in school. Um. You know, I don't, that's really all I can say. I mean, I know. I don't know what the teachers are doing, but I'm like, I know when we do the the zones of regulation, that is, that our primary goal is to help them regulate. And these kids are so dysregulated right now. Any strategy or technique. Um. And as far as I know, I've never seen it because I do it myself, but there there's, there's nothing religious about it and. It 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 really is just about helping them find coping mechanisms mechanisms. Through such a terrible time right now. And. You know, I understand everybody's under, you know, everybody's views and understanding, but um, as an educator, when you have twenty-five children in front of you. And, you know, and some like five or six of them just regulated. You you need to do the, you, we need to find everything we need to do to help them to stay. Um, in school and hap, you know, and be happy and like be happy in school.
Thank you, Mr. Durkin.
I'm sorry, I just.
No, that's fine. Thank you for your comments. Um, Mr. Luzon, did you, were you waving at me? Miss Luzon, did you?
Yes, yes, I was, Chair. I just.
Um, then George Abbott after you. Go ahead, Mr. Luzon.
I just want to repeat what Mr. Day said. We we do have a a policy for the school committee. And. People are supposed to only get two bites at the apple and they're only supposed to be allotted two to four minutes.
Right.
This this meeting would have been over about fifteen minutes ago, but it seems like some people have to constantly rebut. Any different differing opinion of their own. So I I I really wish we could move on because we do have other things on the agenda.
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much.
Here, I'm I'm trying to be respectful of everyone's comments, but I do agree with you, Mr. Luzon. Mr. Abbott, do you have um a comment?
From anthropological point of view, religions are belief systems. So if. These children are not actually believing in yoga as a religion. Then it would be, wouldn't be meaningful.
Okay, good point, Mr. Abbott. Thank you. Um, the last comment, Ms. Penhallow, please keep it short because you've had your bite at the apple as Mr. Luzon has said.
Okay, I'll keep it short. As educators, separate self-regulation from mindfulness are completely different. I've taught self-regulation. All of you know self-regulation is separate than meditation. I don't accept that you have to go to mediation to keep kids happy in school. Number two, my son's in twelfth grade. His meditation, I turned it off. It was tap into his inner child, just feel, don't think. So please don't say that they could step out of it. It's not true. He got a zero because I told him he didn't have to listen to that. Number two, you can't leave it up to a teacher to um just do it her way. Number three, I don't know anything about the lawyer here today. I'm sure he's a very hard worker. I'm sure he's a professional. I found that presentation to be biased and he called it light. This is a big issue. Obviously, it's an issue. Number, the next thing, um, it looks like everyone is talking about. Number, the next thing, it looks like everyone is talking about respectfulness and everyone's trying to be inclusive. I'm an outsider. Well, no, I'm not outside from Charahoe, but I haven't been to a meeting in a while. I think that people being disrespectful, David Stoll, not listening to his experience, no one's asking about his expertise. So I just want to say that. And I'm very upset and I feel like we could rally more people if you think that there's only a handful of us that think this is a wrong, a light issue.
Okay, I am closing this conversation on that, on that exact thread, which was interesting. Okay, we need to move on to letter H. Private graduation party proposed for Nittany Park. This item was requested by Donna. Donna Chambers, you have the floor.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is a private party. This has nothing to do with Charahoe. I, I don't believe it should even be on this agenda here.
Okay, I, I.
Private party, nothing to do with Charahoe. We're not sanctioning it. I think it's out of order to be on, on this agenda. I don't.
Okay, I, I appreciate your, your input on that. It is on the agenda. We need to address it. So I appreciate your, your input at this.
This will be quick. Okay. And Bill, yes, it is a private party. And for that reason, I am going to make the recommendation. Okay, let me just give you a little background. Some of you may already know that there is a movement afoot. I just came to my attention because it was brought before the Charles Town Town Council. Because the group called Classy 2021 is planning a graduation party. We all agree that these kids need to celebrate. We all agree that they're more than ready to celebrate their graduation. However, okay, the, the group that wants, wanted to do it, it still wants to do it at Nittany Park is the reason why it was brought before the Charles Town Town Council to use in Nittany Park. What my concern is, and there, the, the discussion at the town council meeting has still not been resolved because of COVID questions. But this particular private party that is being billed as the Charahoe Classy 2021, okay, is, is being planned and it went from a hundred and twenty-five participants or invitations to over five hundred. So there is over five hundred right now in the planning stages. And my recommendation is to make sure that we either as a school committee or Gina sends out a disclaimer to the parents that this is not a, a, an endorsed or supported or sanctioned event for Charahoe School District. And that's to my point, Bill, that I want it to be disclaimed as a Charahoe event because the word is out that it is a Charahoe graduation party. Thank you.
Okay.
So my recommendation is to send out a public notice that this is not a sanctioned event by the, the school district.
Are you making a motion that we just?
I'm making a motion.
I'm, I'm not sure. Mr. Anderson, is that, I guess we can, does anybody want to second that? That would probably be the next step.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Luzon is seconding it. Okay. So now we're open for discussion. Does anyone have any comments or for against what they think? Mr. Gligori?
Donna, maybe just help, help me understand a little bit. Is the concern that they're using the Charahoe name and therefore it seems it will be affiliated with the schools? And if that's the concern, I would probably agree with that, that we don't want to, we don't want the appearance that we're endorsing this.
Exactly, Gary. I, I feel that it is the appearance of a sponsored event by the Charahoe School District. And I'm very concerned about the liability on this because the planning, the application says Charahoe. And yes, so to a point, yes, I am concerned that the liability would be there.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gligori. Mr. Day, yes, I see you're waving. Please, you have the floor.
Town of Charleston, all they have to do is follow the state of Rhode Island guidelines on crowd control. And all the Town of Charleston has to do is step up and say it's not going to happen. Again, this is not something that we should be involved in. The Town of Charleston can step up and say, hey, it's not going to happen here because the guidelines from the state of Rhode Island won't allow five hundred people on that piece of property.
Okay, so, so let me address that, Bill, because it's scheduled for June fifth, okay? And the, the organizers of this event have done a lot of work in looking at the COVID, the projected COVID and the, the state may be allowing over five hundred outside events to happen. I agree that this is not, this is a Charles Town problem, but it's also because it's connected to Charahoe. And it's the whole, I think the entire graduation class is being invited, that we have liability and responsibility to disclaim that it is not something that we are part of the planning or the organization of.
Lynda, may I just add something? I just, for some additional context. I know we had gotten a couple of calls this week regarding a sign at the Wyoming Packaging that talks about the class of 2020 Charahoe fundraiser, people asking us where that money is going. That's not us. So I think the question in general is when people use Charahoe class of 2021, what is the liability on the district for anyone to use it?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good point. Ms. McAlister, you had your hands up, raised. Do you have a comment? You have the floor.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I agree that it is a Charles Town issue and a problem, but I do think we have to take the name of Charahoe out of it or somehow get ourselves disaffiliated with it. It just sets us up for bad, bad PR. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Justi had her hand, okay. David Stalin and Lisa MacRusso. David Stoll, you have the floor.
I just will need the, the motion read again before we vote on it. It's very confusing to me. So Donna, if, if Donna's, just need the motion for us.
I will. I make a motion that the school district on behalf of the school committee send out a message to the, to the community that this is not a Charahoe sponsored event. It's not endorsed or whatever language, the legal language that we need to put in it that, so that it does not hold us responsible. Or that the parents don't get the impression that it is a Charahoe event.
Okay, does that help you, David?
I make the motion, yeah.
David, is that, is that, is that helpful?
Yeah, I think we, again, we just may want to have Donna read it back right before we vote. But yeah, I, I understand. And, and just in terms of discussion, I think that could easily just be a note from Gina in her regular communication that just a note to parents that this is not, I don't think it has to be formal. I think if, if Gina Picard in her weekly communications that she does simply says FYI, this is not an official school-sponsored event.
I, I think that was, I think that, I believe Donna, that was your sort of, yeah.
That's right. Okay, the original motion I have is that the school committee or Gina send out a disclaimer that this is not an endorsed or supported Charahoe event.
Okay, that's, does that, does that meet your?
I said, send out a public notice, not a sanctioned event by the school district.
Okay.
Seconded.
Donna for clarifying that. Thank you. Okay, Ms. MacRusso, you have your hand up. And then Mr. Luzon.
Donna, thank you for bringing this up. I, I think that absolutely, a minimum, the superintendent will have to publish some type of communication. My initial reaction was that the number and the current COVID protocols, they, they're going to evolve between now and June for the better or for worse. So I, I'd like to continue to track this as the, the pandemic ebbs and flows. And really get, I would like this to come back to us mid-May, I think would be, or whatever our May meeting is. Because that, that influences a lot of this as well, in addition to what Mr. Day said, which is whatever the town regulations are. There also is past practice to do exactly what Donna's talking about. Some colleges used to rent chair buses from our bus company and to support students' safe driving during party weekends. And so the colleges, like you or I, would rent the bus from the bus company that also serves Charahoe. Well, many constituents called me that year to say, do you know your buses are on the weekends? It says Charahoe Regional School District on the side of the bus. And this is the behavior that's going up and down the roads. Barry Ritchie, like he went right to the bus company and said, you cover up Charahoe. If that's what you rented that bus for, make sure our name's not on it. So I, I think it's really relevant to this too. It's not a policy, but it's definitely a practice that I think supports doing this.
Thank you, Lisa. Let's see, was it Ms. Luzon? Ms. Luzon, you had your hand up.
Yes, you know, years back, we used to have a post, a post-grad party that went from till six in the morning and it was sponsored by the school. I, I, I know we're not going to be having that. We're not offering it. But I do want to ask John, who's still on, John, does the way this motion, the way it's worded, does it cover us legally? Do we technically have to cover ourselves legally because we don't, aren't endorsing it? Or should we be publicly stating that we're not?
You don't have to do anything. However, I think that the motion is a very wise one. I will be happy to work with the superintendent to craft an appropriate message that can go out, that can make it very clear that we are not associated with it. You will recall sometime ago that there was the Station Fire and the state, in the Station Fire case, radio stations that advertised the event pursued, beer companies that were doing promotions at the event were sued. So I think that Donna's suggestion is a, again, you don't have to do it, but I think it's a very smart one, and I'm happy to work with the superintendent.
So, so I just want to finish by saying, you know, I, I know the last two years, I was at the parade last year. It was a wonderful thing. It was nice seeing Barry's banner hanging, but you know, it still wasn't a graduation. And, and I know what these kids are going to go through this year and, and I really feel, feel for them because they're not going to experience what all of us have experienced. But, but with that being said, I think, Donna, I'm so glad you made this motion. Thank you very much.
Ms. MacRusso, did you have another comment? No, okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Luzon. Donna had read us the motion. Do you, does anyone need for it to be read again? No? Okay. So discussion's over, so I guess we'll put it to a vote. Those in favor of the motion that Donna, raise your hand, please. I think I, and anyone opposed to this motion? I don't see anyone opposed. Anybody abstaining, recusal? Okay, that was, then that was unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Chambers, for bringing that to our attention. Okay, we're on to I. We're almost there, guys. So this is the early release date planned for the remainder of the 2020, 21 school year. Both Donna Chambers and Ryan Callahan asked for this to be part of discussion at this meeting. And I believe this, I would give it either to either of you. Do you want the floor on this or then we'll?
No, I would like Gina to just give us feedback on the effectiveness of it. I know many parents were disturbed that we initiated this practice. So I just want to hear from Gina as far.
It's a good midpoint too, to get an update. Okay, Ms. Ms. Picard, you have the floor.
So yeah, back in November, right before the Thanksgiving break, the school committee had instituted the weekly early release. So that's come with different feedback. So I'll start with really the, the teacher's ask was that for some additional time and, and both admin and teachers feel it's very valuable time as far as interdisciplinary lesson planning to ensure concurrent learning is efficient and differentiated. It is not easy to do concurrent learning as, as people come in and come out to both distance learning and in-person, planning conferences for student support, assessment, design and review of that data to ensure the lessons are timely and efficient, data analysis, actions of that data analysis, departmental collaboration, and then really the opportunities to meet with and connect with parents virtually through phone calls, et cetera. We actually had some students weigh in as well around their feelings around that early release time. The conversation was around the opportunity for some one-to-one small group and office hours with teachers, especially at the high school level, providing time with the teachers to have makeup assignments, review assignments, get additional support. Some less screen time was one of the things I mentioned, the opportunity for the mask breaks at the middle, mid-point of the week to really practice their independence and their responsibility as we, as they worked with the asynchronous. However, we have gotten feedback from, you know, from definitely a handful of families, some that continue to come to our meetings concerned, you know, about the impact of early release time. I just want to make sure it's clear that while it is early release and asynchronous may not be exactly like live in person at all levels, we're working to really build that independence. And it's not always the best way, but it is a new way, right? And I, we understand that that's a, that's a change and that families are struggling with finding time and with their schedules to be able to. I'm sorry. Families are struggling with time to be able to figure out how to maneuver through the early release on a Wednesday. So with that in mind, fourth quarter begins April twenty-sixth, right after the April recess break. So my recommendation to the school committee is to continue the weekly early release to allow the teachers the month of April to complete sort of that shift into the fourth quarter. And then beginning in May, move to a bi-weekly early release where that would only allow four more early release dates. Those dates would be May twelfth, May twenty-sixth, June ninth and June twenty-third. And June twenty-third is the last day of school so that we would continue early release from obviously this week, which would be the twenty-third, well, March twenty-fourth this week, March thirty-first, April seventh, April fourteenth, and end the weekly one at April twenty-eighth, which is the first week of the fourth quarter, and then move to the bi-weekly. That would be my recommendation based on the feedback and review.
Okay, so you're making a recommendation to, to the committee to go to those changes so it would be bi-weekly till the end of the school year?
So to continue with the weekly until the fourth quarter, till the first week of the fourth quarter, April twenty-eighth being the last weekly, and then moving to a bi-weekly plan, which would allow four more early release dates, May twelfth, May twenty-sixth, June ninth and June twenty-third.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, so, so a move by Mr. Callahan and a second move by Mr. Luzon. Any discussion or questions to the superintendent about this plan moving forward? Yes, Mr. Gligori?
I don't know. Technically, it's not about the plan, but Gina, you did mention concerns from parents about release time. And I feel like, you know, there's a gentleman that's on the call most weeks bringing that up and I feel like I want to speak on his behalf. And maybe it's not to be addressed today, but you know, my daughter's in the middle school and she's now being released at one fifty, one fifty PM. So that's at least twenty-five minutes earlier than the school days meant to end, which I just did a rough calculation starting in March. That's thirty-three hours of time lost to instruction or nearly a full week. So you know, I, this, I understand the stress of the pandemic. We've talked about that over and over and, and the complications. Ah, there's Mr. Waterman right there. But I think Mr. Waterman and other people have a valid concern. I mean, that, that's thirty-three hours of instructional time. It has nothing to do with this release. But I'm just concerned that there's this creep effect that's seeping in little by little by little. And as Mr. Waterman has so eloquently pointed out before, it's, it's happening on so many facets. I'm just talking about the middle school release time. So I don't know. I, I hope it doesn't continue. And I don't know if there's any way to turn it around at this point. I'm, I'm fine with what's happening on Wednesdays, but I'm concerned that it's filtering out into other parts of the day and the week across all our schools.
Thank you. Ms. MacRusso, Ms. Justi, Mr. Stalin and Mr. Day. So Ms. MacRusso, you have the floor. I'm mute. Lisa, I'm mute.
You're in. What was the feedback from Vin and from the teachers on your, on your proposal? Could you go over that again?
So the teachers overall feel it's a valuable time for them to, to really be thoughtful with the concurrent learning as it, it is an additional challenge for this year. as it, it is an additional challenge for this year. My conversation with Vin, basically, he and the membership understood that the school committee placed this in and it could be removed at any time. They, they know that and have actually been asking right after winter break if that was going to be removed. We told them that we were waiting for the, you know, semester one to complete and that we're providing sort of this media point update to the school committee and that we would take the recommendations at that point.
Okay, I'm sorry, let me clarify my question. You, you gave us feedback from surveying the students and the parents, I mean, about your proposed plan specifically to fade out. What is, can you give us a summary of what, what the teachers said about their ability, their readiness to transition to that plan, especially as it relates to end of, end of year grades, end of year testing? I just want to know what that, that third piece is. I, I think it's, it's a reasonable proposal, but we spent so much time. It, it took really months and months for us to get to this point through research to get the teachers the time they needed to make sure that the other days were the, the Charahoe quality. And so I just want to be sure that they're, that we captured their voices as well and that they're on board with this transition.
So it wasn't, wasn't, let's say that I did a survey that each principal, each principal submitted to me sort of the feedback around from the teachers. It wasn't necessarily that they understood exactly what was going to happen. I met with Vin about the plan moving forward and what I was going to present, the understanding, the big picture. But I do think that they believe that their weekly early release time has been very beneficial and it has allowed them to really be mindful, especially during the time where people were very much in and out with distance learning when we had the uptick in December and January. So that was very, very difficult for them to manage because you didn't know what was happening one day to the next as how, how people opted in and out. Then when we started quarter three, which was the end of February, we, we understood that we were sort of pulling in the reins a little bit about who could go to distance learning. We clarified our guidance, but I do think if you spoke to the teachers, they would tell you that the weekly planning additional support has been very, very helpful and supportive, and they felt it was a very good use of their time, as did the administrators.
Thank you. I believe Ms. Juicy then Mr. Stall.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Juicy, you have the floor, yes?
So I don't think we're bringing all of our students back in person 100%. So I don't agree with backing off on the Wednesdays. I think the teachers have expressed time and time again that it is very difficult to do concurrent teaching DL students as well as in-person students. And so I think as a way to support those teachers, and also I've seen the early release Wednesdays utilized by a couple of my kids to do some catch-up work or one-on-one work with a teacher as well. So I wouldn't be in support of backing down the early release Wednesdays. I would like to see them continue for the balance of the year or until we have all of our children back in person 100%. Thank you.
Mr. Stall then Mr. Day. And then I see you, Mr. Luzon too. Mr. Stall, you have the floor.
Thank you. I agree completely with Catherine's points that she just made, all of them. You know, and, and in the context of what we're talking about, mental health and the stress and the anxiety. Not sure if anyone else here is familiar with the concept of mental health days, but we've talked about them in our house over time and those couple hours on Wednesday, both for students and for teachers can be a big relief. I've listened to the teachers. I've not had anyone. I've, I've heard Mr. Waterman here at our meetings and I've appreciated his points and made sure he know, he knew I was hearing him. I've not heard anyone from Ashway School anyway, and certainly not any of the teachers tell me they didn't love this, that it wasn't really meaningful for them. They've said it's huge. They keep reminding me before committee meetings that it's really important for them and that it's very helpful. So I want to stick with that. So I'm, I can't vote for any reduction of it. I'm, I want to keep pressing on with the early release on Wednesdays through the rest of the year.
Mr. Day, thank you, Mr. Mr. Stall. Mr. Day, you're, 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 you have the floor.
Yes, Gary's a concern about the middle school. A few weeks ago, I volunteered with the vaccination of the teachers and staff at the middle school. And, and I believe I found a reason why they get out so early. We're, we're catering to the parent pickups in the respect that the kids were lined up in the hallways, 25 or 30 deep, if not more, going out to the cars before the buses even got there. So you know, this is an area that if we're concerned about teaching time, maybe there needs to be, or looked at at the middle school as to find out why we're catering to the parent pickup and not keeping the kids in the building so that they can leave the building at the same, everybody leave the building at the same time when the high school gets out and everybody leaves the campus in the buses first and then not be so concerned about parent pickup. And this is what I observed personally myself on that Friday afternoon. Number and number of kids lined up on both sides of the corridors, lined up all the way to the library so they could be picked up by parents. And I think that's, that's an area that needs to be adjusted if we're going to be concerned about teaching time.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Mr. Luzon, then, and then Mr. Vin, you're up after Mr. Luzon. Mr. Luzon, thank you for waiting.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Catherine has said, you know. I'm married to a first grade teacher in the district. And right now, I personally think she's getting underpaid because I think she's working two jobs. I've never seen her work the hours in all her years that she has worked since last spring. So I, no, I, I, I agree with Catherine. I don't think we should be taking her away.
Vin, thank you for waiting.
Hello. I just really wanted to, to kind of clarify something that the superintendent said. She did, you know, talk to me about the plan and, and my position, because there was really never an MOU on it. I had said to her that I really, you know, can't be as forceful as I, as I might be if there was an MOU attached to it. And obviously, my preference would be to, to keep the, to keep the days as, as they were. When she did talk about the bi-weekly, the, the one thing that I did say is to try to do the schedule that she presented, because the last day of school, if that was an early release, a lot of teachers really need to kind of pack up rooms, get everything ready to go. And if, and if the students aren't there, it adds, you know, it takes one little stressor off of that. I want to thank Mr. Luzon for, for making his point about the doing the two jobs. Even though the concurrent teaching might not be as new as it once was, it, it doesn't really make it that much easier. I know for myself at the high school, what we're seeing, what I'm seeing a lot in my classes is it's kind of a crapshoot every single day as to whether or not kids are in person or DL. So that also kind of enters into the craziness. And I, I want to try to be respectful to the parents and, and the, the comments that are made about the, the amount of time. I would, I'll close by just saying that I think some of those parents should really look at the number of minutes that Charahoe has their students in versus some of the surrounding districts. I know that there are a lot of districts that are kind of letting their kids out a lot earlier, almost on a daily basis. So if we really want to start talking about how much time is lost, I think the one thing that we should focus on is how much time that Charahoe is really dedicated as opposed to what we've seen in, in some of the other districts. So I respect, you know, the superintendent's position. But if you, if you're asking me what I would like, I would love to kind of see us just finish out the year with the early release days. Thanks.
Thank you. Claire Orinburn, did I say your name right? Thank you for waiting. Do you, unmute, please say you are, you're muted.
So I'm a fourth grade teacher at Ashway Elementary School. This is my 23rd year in Charahoe, so I'm, I'm a veteran teacher. And I'm going to be honest, in 23 years, I've never gotten an evaluation less than effective. So I'm fairly confident in my teaching abilities, although I'll have to tell you this year, I haven't felt that confident because it's very different, very stressful, very new. Earlier, I heard Jennifer and the school psychologist talk about the social emotional health of students and the toll on the family unit that this year has taken on students' families and how hard the general education staff has been working to make sure that our students are healthy. And I wonder if anybody is worrying about the social emotional health of us, of the teachers, of the educators, of the people that are working so hard and the emotional toll and that it's taking on our family units. I'm an older parent. I have older teenagers that live in my house, but I rarely see them. On the one day that I could see them on a Sunday, I'm working an eight-hour day to prepare for my week. Although many of my students have come back, it doesn't matter if I have 17 kids on a screen or one. I'm still spending the same amount of time creating materials for the one student that I am creating for the 17 that I may have had at the beginning of the school year. The fact that kids can come and go on a daily basis, oh, somebody had a stomach ache today. Tomorrow, they're not going to be in school. They're going to be on my screen. So I have to be prepared at a moment's notice to be able to assign those digital assignments to that student that didn't go home with their math book, that didn't go home with their writing journals, so that they can have the educational experience that my students in my classroom are having. The Wednesday half-day that's been given us has allowed me to maybe not work an eight-hour day on a Sunday, but to maybe have a four-hour day on a Sunday, that I'm getting up at nine, I'm working until, you know, noon or, or one. And then, I don't know, my husband and I can go for a ride, go take a walk on the beach, have a family dinner with my children. Because that's important to me. That's what's keeping me sane. That's what's keeping me from being so stressed out that I have to take mental health days. And I'll be honest, I haven't taken any of those because I'm so worried about leaving my kids because I know that their ability to handle change right now is not very good. That I've taken maybe two personal days all year for various health issues, but I haven't taken any mental health days because that Wednesday does give me that opportunity to take a breath, to do the work that I need to do and to be able to spend a little time on the weekend with my own family. So again, I, I urge you not to take those Wednesdays away if you're really worried about the mental health of your faculty and staff because I truly believe that those days are really what's maybe holding some of us together so that we can get through the rest of the week, so that we're not constantly taking our own personal time for mental health days so that we can service our children a little bit better.
Thank you. Donna Chambers, you have the?
Yeah, just really quick, Mrs. Arbon, Auburn. I just want to tell you that we voted on this as a committee because we were considering the mental health of the teachers and the administrators and the staff and giving you a little more, a little extra time to plan in light of the humongous job that you've had to have through this pandemic. So thank you again, and I will not vote to take it away. I think we need to finish the year with this plan in place to allow you some breathing room for your planning and the wonderful job that you're continuing to do to allow our kids to learn. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Chambers. Ms. McAllister, you have the floor, and then Mr. Waterman.
Yes, I too think that we're almost at the finish line. This has been an eventful year plus, and our teachers have had to do all new and extremely difficult jobs, and we need to take care of them. And the end of the year is stressful. There's a lot to do, there's a lot to accomplish, and I think we need to finish the year taking care of our children and our teachers and give them that time to finish the year safely. Let's put it that way. So I will vote to keep the days in.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. I'm sorry, Mr. Waterman, and Mr. Committee, Mr. Callahan, you have the floor.
I'd like to yield my time to Mr. Waterman if you could come back to me afterwards, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Waterman, thank you for waiting.
And thank you, thank you, Ms. Chambers, thank you for, Dr. Callahan, or, and Superintendent Picard, because I believe this was already on the agenda before I spoke at the last meeting. So, so thank you for, for, for hearing me out again. I do want to qualify it with I am married to a, to a public school teacher, to teach a second grade. I've also been in public education now, I met during my 21st year, so I also walk the walk. I'm going to remain as passionate about this as I, as I've always been because for me, this is about my three children and their education. When I spoke last meeting, there was a statement that was made after the fact that it wasn't made in a negative connotation, but it was, it was this person valued quantity over quality. And, and what I'm struggling with is under this plan with the additional days lost to, to state assessment, that my children have lost 20 days. My middle schooler has lost 20 days of instruction. He has 20 days of asynchronous instruction. That's when he doesn't see his teacher. That's a month. We're, we're very concerned about learning loss. I, I, I've heard the commissioner speak about the reason for assessment so we can determine learning loss. I think the amount of time that they're losing, their, their, their face-to-face instruction is, is, is more valuable than, 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 than the assessments. I am pleased, pleased, I want to be very clear, because I know there's teachers in here. This is not about, I don't want you to lose that time. I'm looking for what outside-the-box ways can we compensate you for doing that time? To, you, you know, I, I know when I was in here in December, we were, there was a budget analysis of, of surplus. Can we compensate teachers to, to, to do this work in planning after school so that their time is valued? That, that is, that is, that is my concern is, is the number of loss. I didn't even factor in the, the loss time getting on the bus. Again, I just want to be clear, I'm here to advocate for my children. The adults have a lot of people who are advocating for, for, for them. And I'm not saying that, that you're not also advocating for, 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 for your students, but I'm advocating for my kids, and that's why I'll continue to, to press this issue. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman. Mr. Call, Dr. Callahan, you have the floor.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to say I was counting votes, and I appreciate the committee members weighing in. I don't think there's sufficient votes to carry my motion. I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Who's, and who seconded that motion? Do you remember, Donna? Who seconded the motion? Ms. Legori, you seconded it?
No, no, but I have just a question of order, and I, I really don't know. If the motion's withdrawn or the motion doesn't pass, does that imply that the early release date is maintained? Because there's no MOU.
Yes.
Does it instead just go away?
Yes. No, no, go ahead, Ms. Picard.
Placed by the school committee at the November 23rd meeting, so in order to remove it or change it, we would have to come.
Okay.
Basically, it remains right now, we, since Mr. Dr. Callahan removed his motion, it just remains.
Okay, that sounds good. I just wanted to be clear.
Craig will need to remove his second, please.
Yes, he said fine. He's giving me the thumbs up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, so at this point, this, the, it does not, it remains, the, the current plan remains in place, as is. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Picard, for presenting that to us.
No, thank you. It's always helpful to understand the direction and to make sure, try to be happy medium, but I'm sure the teachers will be very thrilled that they have their time. As I think the admins have said they've used it very wisely and have appreciated the time to be very thoughtful about their instruction. The next item on the agenda, Chair, we're looking to table that. That I know the school committee received an email and I'm looking for clarification from Rye because Rye's calendar, which they posted next year on their website, has not changed and they, they're still counting the religious holidays as part of the school calendar. So I think we should table it and let me get more information to make sure that we have the most up-to-date information.
So I think Mr. Callahan's making a motion to table this, this item till next time or next meeting or at a later date. And Mr. Luzon was seconding the motion. Is there any discussion or questions or clarifications that we need on that? We're just, we're going to table it. Okay, so those in favor of tabling this item, what, Gina? I'm sorry?
Yeah, I had, I had just a.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary, I'm very sorry.
Just, you'll, you'll realize I'm, I get nitpicky. Just at the very bottom of the calendar, it says early release days that secondary school students are released at 12:45 AM. So they'll just save us time next time if that's corrected between now and when we do discuss this.
So the early release. So the early release times for next, go back to the night, it's not this year's early release, it's.
No, he's got, he's saying I put AM.
Like midnight.
Thank you.
Fine, I can adjust my schedule if we want to do.
Okay, thank you. That's a good pickup. Okay, so those in favor of the motion to table. I don't think any opposed to that motion, recusals, abstentions. So that was unanimous vote. Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Picard. Consent agenda items, what needs to be pulled? Minutes, I think we did have people absent or did we not? I don't remember. Does anybody need anything pulled? I'm not hearing anything. Mr. Luzon?
George has his hand up. He might want some pull before I move the.
George, did you have your hand up, sir? Where is, oh, there you are. George, did you unmute yourself, sir? You're on mute, George. George, you're on mute, huh?
Could you pull the March ninth?
We did.
Okay, so the March ninth, so that would be A two and A three. Okay, so those will be pulled, those minutes, the minutes for the executive session and the regular session minutes. So we're pulling A two and A three. Anything else that needs to be pulled? No, okay, Mr. Luzon, are you doing, I, oh, sorry.
You're ready?
Yes.
Should I make a motion that we we vote go go past eleven? Uh-huh, sorry.
Keep going. You're almost there.
I would, I make a motion to move the remainder, but before I do, and I want to make sure I pronounce this right, I want to recognize a donation from May Lumen Salon. Sean Silvestri of Richmond, Rhode Island of Miscellaneous Supplies, Cape Perm Solution, Color Developer, Lightner, Relaxer, Color Bowls, Color Bottles, Brushes. Hand sanitizer, face mask, tolling one thousand thirty-six dollars to the CTC Cosmetology Program. That's the motion, folks.
Okay, so Mr. Luzon made a motion, Catherine made a second. Those, any, there's no discussion. So those in favor. Okay, there we go. There. Okay, thank you very much. That is unanimous. Okay, so. Yes, please do.
Make a motion to approve A two, the executive session minutes of March ninth, twenty twenty-one, approval of executive session minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty-one, minutes not sealed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and those in favor? Good, okay. Anybody opposed? Abstain or recusal? Mr. Abbott is upstanding and recusing. Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve A three, regular session minutes of March ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve regular session minutes on March ninth, twenty twenty-one. Those in favor? Anyone opposed? Abstaining? No, Mr. Abbott's abstaining. Thank you. Okay, so we did that. Now we're on to reports. Superintendent Picard, please, you have the floor.
At this time, we have no subcommittee reports. So for the superintendent's report, just the update for the concurrent learning. We started trimester three for the elementary school. Many of our students have returned to in-person learning with still a handful left-in-distance learning. We're also planning for quarter four of high school and middle school, which begins after April break. We are waiting on transportation guidance from EDOC and RIDO, which the community mitigation team is reviewing. To our understanding is with the new CDC shift that shows that three feet is no different than six. That they'll be giving us updated guidance with busing, which should alleviate the fact that right now we are at capacity on several buses. Which would be would be problematic for our return on in April. So according to EDOC, if not by the end of this week, by the beginning of next, we should have a confirmation on if that guidance is going to be updated, to be able to. What they're, I, my understanding is what they've presented is that a sixty-five percent increase habit on buses, which is more than enough. For us to be able to transport everyone who is requested to be in person. So that's good news. We also, I said, for the next thing being the vaccination clinic. Was that we had over four hundred employees, which included bus monitors, bus drivers, admins, educators, support professionals, food service workers. Vaccinated at the clinic. Huge thank you to the EMA. Workers of Richmond at Charlestown, at Hopkinton, they were amazing, Ron McDonald. Lisa, Joe Ostert, all of them, they were just a huge help, all the volunteers that did that, both from their team and our team. It was amazing to see and my, I think my favorite quote of the the day was that they said it was the Cadillac of vaccination clinics. We were very proud of that. And it was a day where. I think I've got to see more people than ever since last March when we had COVID started. So it was definitely nice to see lots of happy faces. To get their vaccinations. So a great day for all of us. Kindergarten registration has begun. We started that March thirteenth. And we are doing e-registrations. Little glitches around pre-K, but we're we're figuring it out and. But we're very excited. We have a new K e-registration flyer that's updated on our website. We also have had an easier transition and with the e-registration, it'll also allow us to be very efficient as we. Plan for transportation for next fall moving forward. And even our new registrations will be able to use the e-registration format. Which allows us additional efficiencies in our work around registration. And the upcoming events, report cards come out this Friday for elementary school. Richmond has a school improvement team meeting on March twenty-ninth at five thirty. April second, there are no school staff and students, although it is our second vaccination clinic for the second doses for those who are at the first clinic. Hope Valley on April fifth, Hope Valley PTO virtual meeting at six thirty. On April sixth, it is our all-day budget referendum at the town halls at from eight AM to eight PM. April seventh is middle school pitcher retake day and on April thirteenth, Ashway PTO was hosting a family dinner night at Vocatura Dunn's Corners Pizza. That's it for me.
Thank you. Next, on the agenda, any requests for future agenda items or legal opinions? Ms. Mac Russo, you have your hand up, and then Mr. Day and Mr. Stoll. Okay, Ms. Mac Russo, you have the floor. Unmute yourself.
I was going to, I was.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna unmute myself. Um, so my my first request for future agenda items is that we thin these out. This this was a lot cognitively and emotionally to process for human beings in one evening. So I I think we need to to spread out some of this heavier content in terms of specific items. If necessary, I would like tier one recommendation from the task force around graduation. Garb and decorations. Individuality or inter or identity, however you need to phrase it. So let's say identity expression through graduation attire. That sounds like it would cover what I want to discuss. If it's necessary for the school committee to take action on that in order to incorporate it, please put it on the agenda. If Superintendent Picard says no school committee action needed. I'll just put out a statement that says students are welcome to express their identity within these guidelines. You decide, but I I think that as Mr. Day said, that's something that we should be able to give. To our our students and our community sooner rather than later, at least have a conversation. The second one. Is looking for the tier so that Donna can reference it. And and Mr. Abbott had brought this up as well. I think it's important. So the staff demographics. So tier three recommendation bullet point one and one point one was ways to actively recruit and retain diverse staff. And align with staff demographics. If we don't, everybody isn't on the same page about what those demographics are. What the BIPOC student population is and then what the staff population is, we, it's, I think it's an important discussion. Especially as we're going into hiring season. So those are the two I'd like. On the agenda and thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Stoll, you're up, you're on the, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, so the first is. To put on the agenda out of our discussion tonight, an end date for the anti-racism task force. And replacement with a new standing committee. So I'd like that on our agenda soon. And the second is, we had the legal opinion tonight, but certainly no resolution. So I'd like us to have an agenda item for. Mindfulness and meditation in curriculum and practice at Charahoe. So we can try to to make some decisions on that.
Be a little bit more specific on that, like in what, to what direction? You want the, you want us to discuss it to what end or to what? I'm just trying to make sure that we get the, we get, we get specific. Sorry.
Meditation.
Okay.
And practice at Charahoe. So where where do they exist and where are we okay with them existing or?
Okay, so A, do they exist?
Opinion tonight, let's, let's, let's let that take away that legal opinion and do some thinking and do some more research and come back and have a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of clarification, because the April, because of other.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Picard.
It's already at, well, as big as this one without the additional. So I'm definitely going to need, I don't know if the committee wants to move to weekly meetings or. There's only one meeting in April, definitely all right, the April agenda is already packed. I don't want anyone to think that we're trying to move things up, but we're doing our best to try to do that, but. I understand the time. I just think we may have to rethink how how the agenda looks.
And if. I'm not even presuming.
I just, I just want to be, there's one meeting in April and it's already filled.
I'm not even presuming a date on that. I've demonstrated patience in the past, waiting for a an agenda item. So whenever it comes.
Definitely slick some guidance on the committee's direction. I got how to handle the agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Picard. And I appreciate that, too. So. So I have those. Okay, so I think we're ready. Yeah, Mr. Day, I'm sorry, you have your hand up. I'm sorry, sir. You have the floor.
Ah, yes. I heard what what Gina said about April meeting, but. I really feel that. There needs to be a very serious discussion about the. School safety here and I would. Like to have it on the thirteenth because I don't think we can wait till May. It's going to be an executive session, I know, but I've tried to 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 work on some of these things. That is one of the things I'm very, very passionate about. And I don't feel I'm getting the. Cooperation and the. Way that things should be going here. I've talked to various people and and I'm beating my head against a wall. So. I respectfully request that we have a a time timeframe to discuss the school safety here and the district because. There is a a need to tighten things up here significantly, and it has nothing to do with the two shootings over the. Over the past week, but there are some bad people out there and we need to take this a little bit. Differently than is being taken here in the district right now. So that would be my request. On the thirteenth of April at executive session, those school safety.
Thank you. Mr. Luzon and then Mr. Stoll. Mr. Luzon? I can't.
David, go ahead. I was just going to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, David.
No, I just hadn't lowered my hand, so I'm.
Okay, so Mr. Luzon, you have the floor.
Thank, oh, wow, this is just lovely. It is twenty-three, twenty-three right now. Military time. I make a motion to adjourn.
And then Mr. Callahan made, okay, Ms. Luzon making a motion to adjourn, Mr. Callahan seconded it. I don't think there'll be any discussion. So the who's in favor of adjournment? Thank you so much and thank you everyone for staying late and sticking with it. It was, this has been a lot of things we needed to talk about tonight. Thank you so much and all of you have a safe night. See you soon. Be safe. Bye.